It's a done deal. Good evening, everybody. From the ridgeline to the coastline, from Trancas to Topanga, welcome all of Malibu 90265 to the September 23rd meeting of the City of Malibu at the council. My comrades here. And we'll do, first of all, a roll call.
Councilmember Mullen.
Here.
Councilmember Peak.
Here.
Councilmember Pearson.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Farah.
Here.
Mayor Wagner.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Prior to the approval of the agenda, I'd like to see how the council feels about moving 5A up on the agenda. Like to see if we could do that.
I'll make a motion to move 5A following the consent calendar.
A second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, then we get the report on the posting of the agenda.
The agenda for this meeting was properly posted on September 12th, 2019, with the amended agenda posted on September 19th, 2019. And Mayor Wagner, did you want someone to lead the audience in a pledge of allegiance?
Do the first work and then do the pledge of allegiance. Looking around the room, it's a full house. Jen C. Two, L.A.S.O., could you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We're on item 1A, presentation to outgoing mayor. And Karen, I think you take over at this point.
I'd like to present our outgoing mayor, Jefferson Wagner, with the Wave Award of the City of Malibu for his service to the city.
Thank you. Thank you. I now have a replacement because the other one burned in the fire. So now I've got my new rebuild here. Thank you.
And for those who don't know, Jefferson's been our mayor for two terms, or, excuse me, has been a council member for two terms and is finishing his second term with eight years of exemplary service.
Thank you. Are there any comments from anybody in the room here? Because this is your moment. Any comments? Sounds good, moving on. I like it that way. Okay, where next up is my remarks. And I prepared, actually, this is a speech. I just finished it. And it'll take three pages, double space. That is all. It looks like about three to four minutes. And here we go. "After seven years of elected service to Malibu, I have a great appreciation of the confidence of more than half of the people who cast a vote for me in the last ballot. We're approximately one year from another election, and I predict the dramatic statement 'The future of the city is in your hands' will be all irritated by more than a half dozen candidates and will be continued in front of every HOA meeting or meetings that the general public attends during the election process. There's been a debate lately about the functioning of City Hall and the relationships in service concerning the city manager. There's been talk about and gossip about a strong mayor, which, in my opinion, should have an agendized meeting sometime in the future and discussion with all of you." In the many comments on Faceplant, Tweeter, and Nextdoor, the gossip columns, I suggest this. Let us be reminded by you in emails, phone calls, and your minutes here at City Hall that you have a possible answer for any situation that you feel uncomfortable with. We need to hear it. The typical way is not through Jane, or Sam, or Bob. It's right here tonight, like we see with the great presence of you here. Your vote is equal to your research. When I ran for this office in 2016, I made four campaign wishes and projections, which I feel were of merit at the time. It was my intention to have the city buy a street sweeper, bring an ombudsman's office to the council level for transparency and resolving situation between neighbors and City Hall, to ban plastic sandbags and use burlap or cotton in between. Transparency in the ombudsman's office is still a work in progress. Working with Pepperdine, I hope to bring that forward in the next year before my departure from City Hall. The street sweeper, if we don't get one locally, I'll buy it, put an RFP in, and I'll become independently wealthy. So, the Woolsey Fire brought the rebuild to the number-one priority. Your council answered. We hired outside resources and robbed from other approved budget items to provide permit-free funding for those who need to rebuild. For the next priority, in my idea, I think we should be addressing the short-term rental issues and the implementation of some kind of municipal code. And then to that, I say the council then often need, we function, we need to furnish municipal codes that make sense, make us feel good, and provide what you need as residents. When we do pass an ordinance, we also need actionable follow-up. For that, I would suggest that the next hire here at City Hall be for a code enforcement officer on the weekends to provide service for 13 million visitors, mostly on the weekends, as well as 13,000 residents. This council should honor and make firm its commitments to the visitors as well as the residents. I've honored my commitments so far as best that I can. I've brought some turmoil to my girlfriend Candace and daughter Ava. I apologize for that. We'll overcome that. All the funds that were sent to me to defend my position here, I will return probably 80% to 90% of it once the DA is finished and tosses me aside. I want to leave you with these final remarks that I ran with and that I hold dearly to my heart concerning the City of Malibu. Density diminishes desire. And when running for office, those six or eight people who run in the future, you can use my quote, shake hands, kiss babies, tell lies, and remind us all of you, the campaign promises and elected realities. That's why we're here. And thank you for the privilege of your time. And I will honor you with another year's service and hopefully I get done what I promised. Thank you very much. Okay, the floor is now open for nominations for our next mayor. I would like to take that honor and honor Karen Farah with next mayor. We don't need a second, but let's do it anyway.
I'll second that.
Karen?
I would like to nominate Councilmember Mikey Pearson as Mayor Pro Tem.
Okay, moving down the list. There are no further nominations. I close the nominations. And all in favor of appointing Karen Farah and Mikey Pearson, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Oh, it says hit the gavel. Last time doing the gavel. Done deal. It's all you. Congratulations. Oh, administration of the oath of office. Thank you, Skylar. Then we change the nameplates and move to our mobile chairs. Do it here? Huh? Okay. Ready? Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Karen Farah.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will diligently serve.
That I will diligently serve.
As mayor of the City of Malibu.
As mayor of the City of Malibu.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the State of California.
To the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
I think, Mikey, you're up.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Mikey Pearson.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will diligently serve.
That I will diligently serve.
As Mayor Pro Tem of the City of Malibu.
As Mayor Pro Tem of the City of Malibu.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear truth, faith, and allegiance.
That I will bear truth, faith, and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the State of California.
To the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Okay, I have some remarks that I'd like to give on this night. I'd like to thank everybody who's come here this evening to support me in my turn, as I begin my term as mayor of the City of Malibu. As I look around the room, I see friends, family members, colleagues, neighbors, people I've known from many phases of my life, and I thank you all for making the time to be here for this. Special thanks to my husband Cameron. He's been my biggest supporter and hasn't missed one council meeting. To the people who encouraged me to run and supported me and put me on the council last November 6th, I say thank you. To my fellow council members and the city staff, beginning with city manager Reva Feldman and all of the department heads, as we work through the issues we have set as priorities for the coming year, I say thank you. As a reminder, our top three priorities for the 2019-2020 year are public safety, Woolsey Fire recovery, and school district separation. I take all of these council priorities very seriously, and I look forward to seeing them all through to continuing progress and successful outcomes. I'd like to thank the commissioners that I appointed. Julia Holland, cultural arts; Jeff Jennings, planning; Paul Grisanti, public works; Doug Stewart, public safety; and Rob Wells, Parks and Recreation; Nick Barsakini for wastewater advisory committee. I'd like to thank all of them for their diligence and the expertise they bring to their respective commissions and committees. Like others before me have said, when I moved to Malibu over 40 years ago, I could not have imagined holding the title of mayor one day. But that day is here. I promise to continue to listen to all of you and to work on solving the issues that we face as a city and a community. We're coming up to the one-year anniversary of the Woolsey Fire, and the struggle continues for many, physically, financially, and emotionally. I hope that we, as neighbors and colleagues, each do our part to foster the healing, recovery, and rebuilding that is needed. Please do not hesitate to ask for help, and please do not hesitate to offer it. We will always be stronger as a city together. This city will always be impacted by outside forces, entities and issues where we have no choice but to educate ourselves and navigate them. It takes work. And I ask that whatever you do, you can become part of the solution on issues large and small. The environment, climate change, supporting the arts, supporting our local schools, becoming more educated on issues around public safety and emergency preparedness. Thank you all again for your support now and in the coming years. And now, I believe we'll have remarks. Aye? I'm sorry. I'm new at this. Oh, excuse me. We're on item 1B. Thank you, Skylar. Recognition of Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department Beach Team. Hey, Beach Team, come on up. Okay, I'd like to thank our Los Angeles County Sheriff's Beach Team to accept, invite them to accept their certificates of recognition. Sergeant Braden, Lieutenant C. Two, Deputy Tellis, Deputy Hoffman, and Deputy Versalles will be present to accept these certificates of recognition. And I'd like to read, "The City of Malibu presents these certificates to Sergeant James Braden." If you're here, would you raise your hand? That's you. Deputy David Clay. Deputy Neil Gutierrez. Deputy Chris Hicks. Deputy Gage Hoffman. Deputy Sam Hollinger. Deputy Landon Sanchez. Deputy Hector Sauceda. Lieutenant Jennifer C. Two. Deputy Joseph Tellis. Deputy Mike Trynan.
Two-stripe Mike.
And Deputy Raoul Versalles with gratitude for their service as members of the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department Beach Team. Thank you. Next, item 1C. Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department Summer 29-19 Update with Lieutenant Jennifer C. Two.
Good evening. So I'm going to basically just cover from year-to-date for our crimes, our Part 1 crimes. So from year-to-date, we've had one homicide, which is consistent with what we had last year as well. Forcible rape, we've had three this year. Last year, we had seven. Robberies, we've had 12 this year. Last year, we had nine. Aggravated assaults, this year we had 16. Last year, we had 20. Burglaries, now this is just talking about commercial and residential. We had 59. Last year, we're at 75. Large area theft, we're at 221. Last year, we were at 276. Grand theft, we're at 14. Last year, 27. Arson, three. Last year, one. And a total Part 1 crimes for this year is 329, compared to last year's 416. So that's what it looks like for our Part 1 crimes. Our burglary stats, just kind of want to touch on our burglary stats. Although our residential and commercial burgs have gone down, our vehicle burgs, we're at about 106 compared to last year, about 109. So we're on track to surpass last year's. And we keep doing PSAs on Kavoo and other local media outlets. Really, it just is about surfers. Don't hide your key on your rear wheel well. They know that trick. So, uh-oh. Mayor's looking, I think, at her husband.
Yes, my son-in-law had his car stolen exactly that way.
So, again, we're just really here to remind the public to don't hide your keys and just be vigilant out there. Don't leave your purse on the front seat. You know, hide it in the trunk. So, hope the public will continue to partner with us on that. And then we want to just go over a little bit of the, some traffic updates because this is our first year that we actually had a summer traffic enforcement team, which started Memorial Day and went to Labor Day. It was on the weekends, on Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays. So this is our first year in well over five years. We have had zero fatalities for the summer. So we're really, really happy about that. Our injury-traffic collisions, we are down 42% this year. And then our non-injury, we're down 14%. So I think it really helped with the high visibility and just the actual enforcement out there and then partnering with the local businesses to be part of the solution. Thank you.
Thank you, Lieutenant C. Two. Next, we will. Sorry about that. Next, we will have a presentation by the Malibu Chamber of Commerce on the Tourism Improvement District by Chamber President Ian Rovin. Ian is sick. Barbara Bruderlin will give the report. Thank you, Barbara. Chamber CEO.
Thank you so much, and congratulations to everyone. And thank you, Mayor Wagner, for your service. The Malibu Chamber of Commerce would like to present for future consideration Tourism Improvement District for Malibu. And this would support the hospitality industry and local commerce during the off-season and following any kind of disaster when they struggle. So here to present this is Gina Reed from Civitas. And Civitas handles the establishment of these organizations.
Good evening. As Barbara said, my name is Gina Reed. I'm the consultant that has been hired from Civitas to help in the formation of the proposed Tourism Improvement District for Malibu. So tonight is just an informational presentation, and we will be back hopefully in November if all things continue to go as planned for your official approval. But tonight, I have a brief presentation that just gives an overview of what a Tourism Improvement District is, the proposed parameters for the Malibu Tourism Improvement District, talk about what the process looks like, and then answer any questions. So as an overview, the first Tourism Improvement District was established in West Hollywood in 1989. And since then, 105 destinations in California have followed suit. There are currently 106 in California. And cumulatively, these districts raise over $275 million for tourism promotion. Outside of the U.S. or of California, there are 70 other Tourism Improvement Districts nationwide in some of the states shown. And there are lots of other destinations that are either in the process of forming or going through legislation to form. A little bit about what a Tourism Improvement District is. Essentially, hotels within a certain boundary pay an assessment. It's typically either a percentage of the room night or a dollar per room night. It is collected by the local government, and it's typically collected in the same manner as transient occupancy tax. And then the funds are managed by a nonprofit corporation. Some characteristics of these Tourism Improvement Districts is they create a level playing field. If the boundary is set, all the hotels that meet that boundary description pay the assessment. So you don't have the free rider program of some paying and some not. These districts are highly transparent. You know how much is being raised and how the funds are being spent. These funds are a very reliable source for destinations for tourism promotion. The funds cannot be diverted. They're meant only to fund the marketing efforts for Malibu. And then the assessment can be passed on to the guests. So the assessment is paid for by visitors. So a little look at what is being proposed for Malibu. We are looking at including all businesses in the City of Malibu with 10 rooms or more and a portion of the unincorporated county of Los Angeles that essentially captures Calamigos Ranch. So we're looking at assessing seven hotels. All of the funds would be designed to promote Malibu and the Calamigos Ranch. We're looking at a 2% assessment on the room rate. With the 2%, we're looking to raise approximately $600,000. The term of the district, the law allows the initial term to be five years. Upon renewal, you are able to extend to a 10-year term. But being that this would be the initial year, they're looking to do the maximum five years. And then as far as management goes, a new nonprofit corporation is looking to be formed, which would be called Visit Malibu in Santa Monica Mountains. A little look at the proposed services. This is sort of the 30,000-level foot overview. The idea is to focus on bringing quality visitors to the city during the off-season as to minimize the impact of the heavy season. So targeting off-season visitors, out-of-state visitors, and international visitors. And those tactics being through digital advertising, media, print advertising, and trade shows and conferences. So again, this is sort of the high level. But on an annual basis, the hotels will create a way more detailed marketing plan as to what, how the funds are going to directly benefit them. A little look at what the process to form the district is. We have been working with the chamber and the hotels since the spring. So we've been doing outreach efforts to design those parameters around the TID. We have drafted what's called a Management District Plan. This is what we will be bringing to you later this year that outlines the services, the assessment, the term. The law requires that we go through a petition drive and collect petitions from hotels that would pay the assessment. The law only requires over 50%, but we're confident that we'll get 100% of the hotels.
We'll be sending staff out to the Big Rock neighborhood. They've been notified that we're going to be coming out with bullhorns and such, and we're going to do a follow-up message to them, kind of polling people. So for anyone who is home, we're going to want to know, could you hear us? Could you understand us? Because we just need to know how effective that is if we're using bullhorns to alert people, what that value is. So that's what tomorrow's drill will be about. Okay, it's not very responsive. Something did that, I think. Okay. And finally, as always, we encourage everyone to sign up for disaster notifications and alerts at malibu city dot org slash alerts or malibu city dot org disaster notifications. Reminding everyone, the city hotline, three one oh four five six nine nine eight two. That hotline is staffed 24 hours a day during an emergency. And then there's always the one call to City Hall, three one oh four five six C I T Y, extension three one one. That's it.
Okay, thank you, Susan. All right. Moving on to item two, we will have written and oral communications from the public on items that are not on the agenda. The first three speakers, and after this, please try to come up to the front so we can save time in between speakers. First, we have Terry Lukoff, Joel Schulman, and John Maza.
Congratulations, Mayor Karen.
Thank you, Terry.
You're the mayor of one of the best city councils that I think that we've had for years, and you guys have all been doing a great job. I've been working to rebuild. I lost three properties in the Malibu fires, and I have been working to rebuild those properties. The first property that I am working on to rebuild, I've been in the process now for almost 10 months. I still do not have my permit. It's a guest house that I had run it out, and I needed to build that first so I could have a income to build my house. I never would have dreamed that 10 months after the fire, I still would not have had a permit when you people dedicated yourself to expedited process for the permitting. It's just not there. The city staff is wonderful. They're very helpful, and they keep sending you back for more information. If you've done anything out of the, that's a little bit off the norm, like the house was built in 1975, you come into conflict with them saying things, well, you didn't really have a dishwasher in 1975. Of course I didn't. I was 30 years old, and I didn't think I needed one when I built that house. Or you can't have hot water that goes to where you hose your pet off. So some of these things that this city's doing is really difficult. And when you postpone the permits for the people like this, you have to realize that through the insurance, we're getting our alternative living expenses, and me on my guest house, I was getting loss of rent income. Well, that is up in one-year period, which will be in 60 days now. And everything now will be coming out of my pocket. And so I see a lot of grief as a realtor when I talk to people within the community. You're maybe not even hearing from them, but people are telling me every time how stressed they are, how difficult this is. And I would like the city council to come back and please see what you can do to expedite the building process for us. Eighteen permits in 10 months is not satisfactory. There's 480 other families in total agony. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Terry. Next, Joel Schulman, followed by John Maza, followed by Deborah Frankel.
Did you see Ann Donin gave me a minute? Is that true? Have you seen that?
That's correct. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, this is about, you know, our effort to ban pesticides in Malibu outside the city property, including city property and outside, using the Coastal Commission LCP amendment. This started, we started with this in the fall of 2014, and two or three different city councils unanimously agreed this was a good thing to do. And that was in 2014, and nothing has happened. I'm here because, we did receive some news two or three days ago through the help of Sheila Kuehl's office going to the Coastal Commission. To our surprise, this has actually already been determined in court. And how come we don't find out things like that? How did we, how are we supposed to know that? Because we've been fighting this, and we just found out it was all done. Kind of strange. In 2014, someone sued the Coastal Commission to block LA County's, October 2014, Santa Monica Mountains LCP. I could tell you more about it, but it's not relevant. And it had to do with vineyards. And in September 2017, the Superior Court of Los Angeles said, you know, you lose, Coastal Commission wins. One of the several arguments the plaintiff made was this very issue of there were, apparently in their opinion, local control of regulating pesticides. And the plaintiff said that's illegal. And the judge says, no, it's not. It's fine. And the judge said, in banning pesticide use in an LCP, the Coastal Commission is not compelling the county to exercise power it does not have. Instead, the commission is requiring a pesticide ban for the county's LCP to be administered by the county, which is what everybody has always said all the time, including us. And that, so that's completely clear now. And that also shows, demonstrates something I've been saying multiple times, is that a locality cannot be sued. There's never, there has never been any danger to the city of Malibu to be sued because it's specifically in the law itself that you, not that you can't sue, but that there's another way to decide these things. So this plaintiff sued, did not sue LA County. The plaintiff sued the Coastal Commission because it's a Coastal Commission law. It's not a local law. That's completely consistent with everything that has been said. So I'm asking you to, you know, it's been five years. Please do something. I just want to add one thing. Something that's happened in the five years is that glyphosate. You know, we really started this with the rodenticides in the wildlife. As you people know as well as I, I mean glyphosate and Roundup has become huge. People really care about it at least as much, maybe more when we're talking, people are constantly coming to us and saying, what are you doing about glyphosate? You know, to poison free Malibu. The LA County Santa Monica Mountains LCP addresses that and did in 2014. So you don't have to break any ground here. In the Santa Monica Mountains LCP, it says insecticides, rodenticides, and herbicides. So I would hope that you include glyphosate also when we come up with the language. And, you know, I know a lot about it. You know, I would really like to help in any way I can. There's a lot of subtleties that I'm not going to go into, and I'd like to help do that. Now, one other thing, this is a very specific issue concerning the Coastal Commission. It has to do with this pesticides and this preemption and locality. There is a special law blocking localities. It doesn't give any power, extra power, to the Coastal Commission to use this mechanism. This is very specific, and it won't give any, it doesn't, it doesn't help the Coastal Commission control our lives in any way other than this.
Thank you, Joel. Next is John Maza, followed by Deborah Frankel, followed by Craig Hill. If you could please come up to the front. Thank you.
Greetings, and whoops. Congratulations, Karen. I'm not going to talk about, anything about the new mayor, because the new mayor is rotational and has to prove herself. I want to talk about the old mayor, and that's Jefferson Wagner. And Jefferson went way beyond what most mayors do. It's a title more than a entitlement. So he went out and he did what he thought was best for the city and what he promised to do in his election, and he worked hard at it. He was abused more than most mayors. His house burned down, all kinds of things, but he kept on. And he spoke out when things needed to be pushed along. When things got put into staff Siberia, for example, rodenticides. Five years in Siberia is a long time. And he kept bringing it up and bringing it up. Same thing with short-term rentals, same thing with mansionization, all kinds of issues that we look at your agendas every week, and it's a bunch of contracts. And the real big items, maybe once a year. And we need to move faster on that. And Jefferson tried as hard as he could to push things along. And I hope, Karen, you try as hard as you can to push things along. People get older, as Terry will tell you. And you can't wait another five years to build a house or another five years to protect the Hawks. We can't wait anymore on short-term rentals. I mean, I get calls almost daily from people who are just, have their minds fried about having a party house next to them. I drove in here tonight. One of my neighbors had four party trucks moving in. There's going to be a party tonight. I can live through it. But the main thing also is Jefferson had transparency. He had his second City Hall. And you could always go down and talk to him during business hours. You didn't have to make appointments. You didn't have to work the political system to be able to talk to somebody. And I think that's very important. So I hope you all can, you have one more year for another election. I hope we can get some things accomplished in the next year. And Karen's in charge. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Next is Deborah Frankel, followed by Craig Hill, followed by Hap Henry. If you could please try to come to the front. Thank you.
Congratulations, Karen and Mikey. So happy to see you guys up there. I know you're going to do a great job. I'm here tonight in the interest of no more fires, and we're all going to go down to the Board of Supervisors tomorrow and argue this issue about camping in the mountains. We don't want it overnight for obvious reasons. And so anybody who's in the audience who, I'm trying to organize car pools for this. So if anybody is interested in that, contact me in the next 15 minutes. Because it's tomorrow morning at 9:00 AM. I'm also wondering why we didn't have buses coming from Malibu City Council since we have the mayor coming and the city council members. And I'm wondering if we can have more of this in the future and why we didn't have this. I understand Jim Thorson used to get buses for us all the time. So I'd like this to get more organized in the future. I think this, you know, we have our fights ahead of us, and it's a big hall to go downtown. We should do it organized together.
Thank you. Thank you, Deborah. Next up is Craig Hill, followed by Hap Henry, followed by Barry Haldeman. If you could please come to the front.
Good evening, Council. Congratulations, Karen. A couple things here. First, regarding Edison, some good and bad. I had the dreaded tree trimming visit. It turned out to be an easy, friendly conversation. We determined that no cutting was necessary, so all turned out well. On the other side, I got the your power maybe turned off notice, but it wasn't just that usual your power's out for a few hours kind of thing. They were replacing a pole on my property, and myself and a dozen other homeowners were kept awake all night with a bunch of cherry pickers and a dozen guys shouting. And so there was a weird noticing problem there. And if that's just an anomaly, I'll shrug it off. But if other people have issues with Edison on the noticing on that, I'd be, I'd volunteer to go do a tap dance on Rudy Gonzalez's desk. Now, at your last meeting, you agreed the city should form a climate council at the COG level in some way. You didn't really go into detail, but, and I think one way to think about that, to reiterate, is that the disaster council you talked about is to respond to acute events, whereas this climate council with the COG would be more about chronic, long-terms kinds of things. And so to clarify, when I said, don't call it an emergency, I didn't mean to suggest it's not urgent, but that it will be more of a marathon and less of a sprint. Some climate news. Just last week, the University of California just disinvested from all its fossil fuels. So I'll reiterate my question to council about what is the city's portfolio looking like on that. And since studying climate change in grad school 25 years ago, I've noticed that every time there's a new, more precise climate model, the warming is projected to be greater and sooner. Every time, it's a pattern. And last week, it ratcheted up again. The La Place Institute, which works with the EU and the UN, has a new model projecting that the average global temperature rise by 2100 won't be two or three degrees centigrade as sort of predicted a business as usual, but more like seven or eight degrees centigrade. Three times higher. That's over 12 degrees Fahrenheit average. For context, in Paris in 2016, countries agreed to limit the rise to one and a half degrees centigrade. No countries are meeting their targets, none so far. So that's not good news. By 2100, some places on the planet will be experiencing temps above 140 degrees Fahrenheit. So many trends are accelerating. We may not feel much yet, but we'll be feeling much more decades from now. Coastal Commission's latest guidance says if the 18 inches we're calling for now, that might be good for the next 25 years or so. But by 2100, we'll be needing seven feet or more of sea level rise to be building on the beach. So it looks like the new Caltrans worst-case scenario just got way worse even before the ink is dry on the report. To be continued. Thank you.
Thank you, Craig. Next up is Hap Henry, followed by Barry Haldeman, followed by Carolyn Carradine.
Good evening, members of the city council. Councilmember Wagner, thank you for your service, past and future. And Mayor Fair, look forward to your continued service. And Mayor Pro Tem Pearson as well, as well as Skylar and Councilman Mullen. Tonight, I am speaking on behalf of urging the council and the city to step up in reining in the short-term housing market. And as one of those who has been affected by the proliferation of said market throughout my lifetime, as a 26-year-going-on-27 Malibu resident. I was just at the opening of the Friday night art event exhibit orchestrated by the Cultural Arts Commission. That was a truly beautiful, heartwarming event. And as the child of two Malibu artists, one surviving, one deceased, who were both low-income when I was growing up at Wonka Brio in Malibu High. And I'm currently low-income myself. And, you know, there's creative ways that we can work together as a community to, you know, reduce some of the red tape around some accessory dwelling units, some of the junior accessory dwelling units on some of the lots. My family's owned land in Point Dume since 1973. That's some land right there. And there's other lots that we can be creative and put some, you know, tiny homes, storage unit homes, and really modernize our housing market as we move throughout the 21st century. And in addition to tampering down on the short-term rental market and really giving opportunities for innovation for the working class in Malibu to, and those of us who grew up here and never plan on leaving, to really flourish as we, you know, rebuild this community together. So that's why I'm here tonight and look forward to working on this issue with the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Hap. Next up is Barry Haldeman, followed by Carolyn Carradine, followed by Lance Simmons. And if your other speakers are here, I'll read their names later. You will have seven minutes.
First of all, I'd like to congratulate our new mayor. Congratulations. Be careful what you wish for. And definitely to our former mayor and all the good service he's done. I'm here to talk about, tomorrow is a very big vote at the LA Board of Supervisors. They're going to be voting on whether you can camp in Esha in the Malibu Mountains and the Santa Monica Mountains. Esha is the most sensitive environmental zone and actually the most fragile and also the most fire-prone. This is a terrible plan. The way they're administering it is if people go in there, they're going to have one ranger walk through a day. Could be at 10 o'clock in the morning, and people start fires at night. It's technically cold camping, but, you know, people just do things. They smoke cigarettes, et cetera. By the way, there are no rangers walking through during red flag days when they're not supposed to be in there at all. We need, a number of people have written terrific emails to the Board of Supervisors. We need people down there because we've found that there are, if bodies show up, it's a very important thing. And we need everyone's help. So if you can come down there, the details are, it's at the Board of Supervisors Hearing Room 500 West Temple Street, Los Angeles, Room 381B. We have a Facebook page called Santa Monica Mountains Safe Access Coalition, which has the details on it and several descriptions of arguments about this. We especially would like some young people to appear down there who were either burned out or it affected them. I remember when we became a city, my daughter, who is here tonight, was the only young person, she was about 12, who spoke, and she's the only one who made it onto television. And it was a very effective speech. We got, they decided to study it for a year, and during that time, they wanted to put in a regional sewer. During that time, we became a city. So it's very important that you show up again. And one of the things that will happen if you show up is that you will get a T-shirt to indicate in the audience, if you're not speaking, just what your feelings are. And I've asked Jennifer, my daughter, to pass out to the people on the dais T-shirts now. And you might hold up one, Jennifer, just so they, the audience can see what it looks Says no more fires. And on the back, on the back, we have a list of all the fires that have occurred recently in Malibu. So I'll let you pick the, we have large and extra-large. And so thank you very much. I hope to see you all tomorrow, and thank you to the city council people who are coming.
Thank you, Barry. Next up is Carolyn Carradine, followed by Lance Simmons. And Lance, if you'll just let me make sure your speakers are here before you speak. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Well, I didn't get to give my thank you speech last night for an Emmy, but I'm here tonight to thank everybody for a far greater award. We are number 18. Yay. It's been tough, but I really want to just thank everybody who made it possible. The city, Richard, Craig, Andrew, Mary Ann, Lauren, Rob, Matt, Darrell, Julie, and everybody else who helped us, especially Riva, who really stepped up to the plate when it seemed like it was going to be impossible. And we have it now. And on a personal level, I have to thank my husband, the genius architect who has designed what will be, I believe, the most beautiful house in Malibu. And our son, Henry, who came and helped us sift through the ashes right after the fire and is here now and has witnessed the stamping of the approval. So I am so grateful and so thankful. And anybody who is waiting in line, just get in touch with the people in the city. They've been fantastic. Everybody's really been wonderful and very, very helpful. It's a difficult process, but believe me, when you get, when you hear the stamping of the plans, it's worth it. So thank you all.
Thank you, Carolyn. Okay, Lance, if I could just see a show of hands from people who have given you a minute. We've got Sherman Balin, Mark Russo. I think he's here. Mark, thank you. Cheryl Calvert. Hi, Cheryl. And Tracy Ross. Okay. Thank you. Lance, you have seven minutes.
All right, thank you.
Sorry, Ted, yours was not attached. Thank you.
Good evening, council. Congratulations, Karen, and best of luck to you. I know that council will be in good hands under your leadership. I had prepared a nice, long speech, which is why I requested all the extra minutes, but I think I'm going to skip the speech and just go right off of my emotions and my head. I want to commend the council for passing the Climate Change Emergency Declaration two weeks ago. I truly, and those of you who know me, I've spoken about this before, and I've been dedicated to environmental issues for the last 40 years. I really don't believe that there's a more seminal moment facing all of us than this issue. And I want to, once again, I just want to commend you for passing it, and I would very much like to be involved in whatever it is that's going to happen. Rick, you and I have a disagreement on this. Rick was the dissenting vote, and he certainly has a right to dissent. But I must say, the extent to which we can move forward in a united front, I think is very important. And if, if in fact, the issue was terminology, I know that you had difficulty with the word emergency, maybe we could come up with something else. And I know also that you were worried about the extent to which this can be a traumatic event on our children. I understand that, but there's something worse, and that is shielding them from reality. And for all of us who have watched these kids this week, and particularly that 15-year-old from Sweden, Greta Thunberg, I believe is her name, basically told the folks that are making all the decisions, which are people in our generation, to get the hell out of the way because they have failed. And that's true. We have failed. I've given so many speeches on this all over the world. And I tell the kids that they really have to take this by the horns and ride it. So Rick, you and I will have to disagree on this. I don't think, I don't think we're, I don't think we're traumatizing our kids because they look at the reality, they see it, and they're ready to tackle it. And the best thing we can do for the future generations is to involve them, because let me tell you something, they provide us, I'm a father of two millennials. I was a single father of two millennials. I raised my two kids. And they provide more teachable moments to me than I provide to them often. These kids know what's going on, and we got to listen to them. And yes, this is an emergency. Every fact, every statistic, every piece of evidence only shows things getting worse. Every fact, every statistic, every piece of evidence only shows things getting worse. The five warmest years in recorded history have happened in the last five years. That's not a coincidence. I don't know if it's possible to revisit the vote or to make a statement, but I would really implore this council to attack this in the united front, if that's possible. If it's not, it's not. And, Rick, we are, we are very proud of your military service and what, you know, what you sacrificed to protection of all of us. But I've been involved with military analyses with a top-secret security clearance for the last three decades. I worked on the U.S. Senate Budget Committee. I used to read the five-year projections of military strategy. I went to the U.S. Army War College. I participated in, in very high-level types of exercises. And the military has recognized that climate change is a threat multiplier and something that has, is going to play an enormous role in the future of how we conduct our military operations. For over 35 years now, they've seen it, they know it. And this migration problem, that is a worldwide problem, but is particularly affecting our southern border right now, the evidence is that the starvation that's happening in Guatemala because of climate change is what's driving people to this border. And the desertification, desertification in Africa are driving people to Europe. We've got, we've got to be serious about this. We live in this beautiful, bountiful place, and if there's any city council in the world which should be tackling this issue, it's ours. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Lance. And I will say, I failed to mention Norm Haney had also given you a minute. So for the record, I have that. Next up is Paul Grisanti, followed by Ryan Embry. And that's it for the speaker slips I have on unagendized items.
I'd like to start by thanking Jefferson for comporting himself as a dignified and knowledgeable person before every different organization in L.A. County and State of California for the last, for his term and actually the whole time he's been in office. And I have great confidence that Karen will do as well and maybe even excel him because she's an awfully competent, wonderful person, and I'm so pleased that you're going to be serving as the mayor. And now for the, for the horrible parts you don't want to hear about, I guess you're all going to the Board of Supervisors meeting tomorrow. I'm going to go too, because I just love to tell people about what happens when people who aren't supposed to be camping decide to, and not supposed to have a fire, decide to light a fire in a cave at the top of Corral Canyon. And then when it gets too smoky, kick it out the door of the cave because that'll make things better, and the wind, the wind will blow the fire out. Don't worry about it. And I sat through every court appearance of those young idiots, and I'm now receiving the princely sum of $14 of compensation a month as my share of the compensation for what they did. Of course, the 10 years is, is over, and so I have to, I now have to decide, do I really want to go through the process of asking for it to be renewed for another 10 years? So the, the county really needs to, to do what we want them to do. It's ridiculous. ESHA should not be camped in. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Ryan Embry?
Yeah, this thing about ESHA is that you're, it's some of the most flammable in Southern California, especially the acacia, and that came out in one of the court decisions. The history of 1993, which Christie might remember, was that there were several fires in 1993, and the first in Los Angeles County that became the problem occurred in Eaton Canyon area in Altadena, north of Pasadena. That incurred, occurred late in October of 1993. And there was a massive assembly of resources for firefighting, and they all got worn out and burned out, no pun intended. And I kept my fingers crossed and said, I sure hope there's no problem in Malibu because the resources are all gone. And yes, unfortunately, that happened on November 2nd in Malibu, and the Malibu, Ol Tapanga, Malibu Fire devastated Malibu. And we had a parallel to that, again, during this last fire. And going back and looking at the history, the illegal encampment in Altadena was caused by a homeless person in the hills. And that had a direct impact in an indirect way on City of Malibu and Malibu County residents in 1993. So it's not just the boundaries and jurisdiction of the city or the county. Ventura County, the fire started this time, the fire knows no boundaries and does not honor any jurisdiction. So I would urge anybody who has the ability to rearrange their plans for tomorrow morning, to leave Malibu before 8:00 a.m. to get to downtown Los Angeles for the Board of Supervisors meeting, which is scheduled for, I think, 9:30 p.m., but get there early. I'm very disappointed that the city staff didn't have the wherewithal to coordinate a shuttle bus for this purpose. The city's done it before. They're very easy to do. There's no party bus that is unavailable at 7:30 a.m. on a Tuesday. Could have happened, should have happened, it can still happen. You could call the City of Santa Monica, Blue Bus, they could send a bus or two. It could happen. If it was an emergency, it would happen. I think this is an emergency because it's the next emergency that we're planning to have to stave off unwise county board of supervisors. They should know better. But you've got to go and represent us. We have to go and represent ourselves, and we have to get there ourselves to do so tomorrow. So I would like to hear if there's any way that the city council can get an answer tonight when the city manager gives the report, if the transportation's been provided, and where to get on the bus if it's at Heather Cliff at 7:30 a.m., if it's at City Hall at 7:45 a.m. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. That concludes public comments for items not on the agenda.
Karen, I'd like to make a motion to hear 5A before the consent calendar.
Do we have a second?
I would like a second. Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have our city manager update.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. I'd like to congratulate Mayor Fair and Mayor Pro Tem Pearson. Congratulations, and thank you, Councilmember Wagner, for all that you did while you were mayor during a difficult time for all of us. I'd also like to thank our beach team. We're very, very lucky to have the services of the beach team throughout the summer here in Malibu. And given the statistics that Lieutenant C2 provided us, I think we did okay, given the amount of crowds that we had this past summer. And I'd like to echo what she said, do not leave your keys on your tires, and remember to lock your doors. Wanted to also announce that we do have some warm weather the next couple of days. It hasn't quite hit a red flag, but it's close to that. The fire department will be providing augmented staffing in this area and over the hill. So please stay alert and keep aware of what's going on. To echo what Susan Duena said during her report, if you haven't signed up for alerts and notifications, please do so. And we will be conducting our final reverse 911, which is our Everbridge system to western Malibu this week. So if you do not receive a call this week, that means that you are not signed up or we do not have your number through the automatic system. And please contact the city so that we can make sure that you do get those reverse 911 calls. Our plan is to use those, that system when there is a real emergency and evacuations are happening. So it's very important that people have that. So our next test of that will be this Wednesday, again, for the western Malibu area. A couple other upcoming events, we also have this Wednesday Coffee with a Cop, and that will be at the Country Mart Playground from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. So please come by. And I understand there will be some miniature therapy horses there, so that should be fun as well. On Thursday, September 26th, at 10:00 a.m. here at City Hall, we have our homeless working group, and residents are welcome to attend that. That evening or afternoon from 3:00 to 4:00 on Thursday, we have a free disaster preparedness class for older adults and people with disabilities. You can register online or call City Hall. And then that evening at 6:00, we have a CERT training at City Hall for those members who are interested in participating. Also, on Wednesday, we have a local author series. It's a spinoff of the Library Speaker Series, and that will be held at the library. And June Luke's and Suzanne Goldman will be the first featured participants of that program. This weekend, September 28th and September 29th, Los Angeles County will be hosting mock elections here at City Hall. They'll be launching a new voting system for 2020, and we are one of the areas where they are testing that out. So if that's something that interests you, please come by City Hall. And then a couple other upcoming items, on October 30th, Caltrans will be hosting a community meeting to discuss the dreaded Malibu Seafood Crosswalk Project. So it's at 6:00 here at City Hall, and I know that's something that's been frustrating for the community staff, has really been pushing back with Caltrans on it, and the best we could get at this point was another community meeting for them to hear our thoughts on that project. And then lastly, just to save the date for November 9th, we're in the process of planning an anniversary event for the Woolsey Fire, for the one-year time that's ticked by. We're still looking for a location for that, and we'll have that soon, but it will be a community event, and I really hope everybody will attend. So that concludes my remarks, unless you have any questions for me, Mayor.
I don't. Anyone else?
Yes, I was reminded that we might have Riva talk just for a moment about some of the comments from public members about transportation to the meeting tomorrow. So maybe some clarification, because I wasn't aware of it, but I'd like to let her take the handle.
Certainly, council members. So the council did not direct staff to organize any type of transportation. The last time that this was talked about as a group with council was in May, and they directed staff to send, or send a letter on behalf of the council to the Board of Supervisors, and that was done. But we did not have a direction to organize transportation for residents or any funding in the budget for the bus. So unfortunately, it wasn't something I was able to coordinate, though I understand transportation is challenging to get downtown.
Okay, thank you. Next, we will hear item 5A before the consent calendar. Do we have a staff report?
Do council comments?
Oh, sorry. We have council reports. Thank you. Who'd like to go first?
Go ahead, Skylar.
Well, I'm just going to be very brief tonight. I wanted to thank Jefferson for his service and his continued service to our community and his leadership. And I want to welcome you, Karen, as our mayor. I think that you'll find that it's a interesting job, and you'll have a few more things to show up to. So I know that you'll do a very good job to serve our community, and thank you for your leadership, as well as Mikey filling in when needed. That's what I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Skylar. Who'd like to go next?
I'll go. Also, I'd like to say congratulations to Karen and Mikey for your assumption of your new leadership positions. And like everyone before me helped me, if there's anything we can do to help you in your new positions, don't hesitate to ask. And I just want to remark how large both of your fan clubs are coming out tonight. That was pretty cool. And Cameron, you get the spouse of the Millennium Award coming here for every council meeting. That is, you blew the competition out of the water and continue to do so. Jefferson, excellent job on your second term as the mayor. I really appreciate all the leadership you've done. You've been the rock of Gibraltar at times when I could have used a little firming of the spine at times, and I appreciate that you've always stayed the course. You've been true to the things that you said, and I admire you for that. And I know it's going to be an interesting year. We're going to get to a lot of those items that you talked about. We'll make sure to wrap it up because the three of us came on board to do certain things. We're going to make sure we get them all taken care of over the course of the next year. Hasn't been easy being in a leadership position while at the same time dealing with your house being burnt down, so I think you've done an exemplary job. And I think that managing the leadership position of the city post-fire, where you also had to attend meetings as representative of the city to the county while dealing with your own hardships for your home, as well as being a longtime local businessman, business owner, is admirable, and you set a great example, not only to your fellow council members, but to everybody in the community. So well done. Good job on that.
Thank you, Rick. Thank you for that confidence, Rick. It does mean a lot to me. Thank you so much.
Oh, you deserve it. I also went to the Radical Beauty Art Show the other day, which was very nice. I had to leave a little earlier than, I didn't get to see all the performances, but I saw the first one, and all the art was very inspiring. It's, it's amazing. You know, I look at, every time we have an art show or something like that, they're all super well-attended, and I think that is important. We got to take note of that and do more events like that to celebrate art in our community because there's a lot of talent. And I think that not just an expression of beauty and art, but the cathartic effect that I think that has on the, after the fire was admirable, and anybody who missed out on it, maybe you can come to number three because there'll probably be more in the future, I'm hoping. I had the privilege of going to a memorial service for a very fine member of our community, Dick Schreiber, this last weekend. And for those of you who don't know, and we closed the last meeting in his honor last time, and in many ways, he really personified what's great about this town. He was very simple and very steady, and he enjoyed the outdoors, and he lived in a beautiful spot in town and in a very simple structure. And he and his wife, every day would walk and swim down the beach, and everybody who came into contact with him was affected deeply. And his ceremony was actually as simple as he is in his life, and it was very moving. So he set an example, I think, for all of us that we can aspire to. And if anybody who knows him knows what I'm talking about. Okay, let me talk about the ESHA issue that everyone's talking about, going down to the Board of Supervisors meeting, because I'm the guy who initiated that lawsuit, okay? And I went to this Coastal Commission meeting where the LCP for the Santa Monica Mountains was enacted, the very first meeting in Santa Barbara, where nobody was paying attention to the fine print of the local coastal program, but we were, and we had a very good lawyer who picked out what exactly they were trying to do. There was a lot of money spent by that organization, which I'm no longer a part of, which I had to relinquish my leadership position when I became a city council member, but they spent a lot of money for a long time in taking the Coastal Commission to court, and they were partially victorious in that. So with all this stuff going on, I did speak recently to the lobbyist who was hired by that organization to negotiate a resolution to the wording that's going to go into the LCP that will be voted on by the Board of Supervisors tomorrow. And I did attend a meeting with him as a representative of the city council, when we met with one of Sheila Kuehl's deputies a while back on this issue. And I said to him, what can we do? I mean, do you need help from the city council? Do you need people to show up with pitchforks and torches? What is it that you need at this point? And he, when I spoke to him, this is a few days ago, he didn't say, what he said was, it's different than the Malibu City Council. Once they get to a position, they usually, it's difficult to sway them once you get to the meeting. But he did- But he did impress upon me that they are ardently and have been working on negotiating the, and they're still working on it, when I spoke to him a few days ago, the actual language that will dictate what people can and cannot do. And it's not just ESHA because if you're familiar with the Santa Monica Mountains Local Coastal Program, there's three different types of ESHA. There's H1, H2, and H3. And there's one is super sensitive, one is semi-sensitive, and one is, you know, already been substantially disturbed. So it's a complex issue. I hear what everyone's saying out there. And as somebody who was, who threw the first shot across the bow in this issue, I appreciate your ardent passion. And my conversation with the lobbyist who's working it out seemed to think they were doing fairly well and getting a pretty dang good solution to it. Maybe not 100%, but pretty good. So I would just encourage you, if you do go down there to the Board of Supervisors, always be respectful for them because remember representing the city of Malibu and hopefully they will listen to you. So good luck if you go down there. Caroline Carradine, thank you very much for coming down here and saying such nice things about our city staff and the city manager. It's very nice. I know it's not been easy for you and your family since, and I know you've expressed that to us on a number of occasions, so I know you wouldn't hold back. And I appreciate the fact that you took the time to come down here and express your gratitude. And if there's anything that any of us can do, I would encourage you probably to pick up the phone and call the city manager directly because that's probably the person who will ensure that action is taken. But it's very kind of you to come down and say those nice things. Lance, hey, 4 to 1 is a pretty good majority. You guys should be happy with that. It's not civil discourse. It's okay to have dissenting opinions. And I do appreciate your passion. And I know you're trying to convince me that, to come to your side of the argument. And that's fine. But it's, it's okay to have dissenting opinions and it's okay for us not to agree 100% on things. There's nothing wrong with that. 4 to 1 is a pretty dang good majority. And as I said, when we, when we address this issue, I think actions speak louder than words. And I think that we've done some pretty good actions here to set the example, not only for the citizens of Malibu, but for the rest of the world. And we have some very environmentally engaged leaders here who've done some good things and I think we will continue to do those good things. So I appreciate your passion and I, I don't say you're wrong, okay? And I don't say that you are incorrect in what you say. And I think that's maybe some of the problems that I have, some of the, with the environmental movement is that there's no tolerance of dissenting opinions, okay? And I would just say that I respect your opinion and I hope you respect mine also. Thank you very much. It's not important to have unanimity on everything. And 4 to 1 is a pretty darn good majority. But thank you for your kind words. And that's all I got.
Okay, thank you, Rick. Jefferson?
Thank you, Karen. Enjoy the office and we'll be at your back anytime you need us. Just holler. I'll try and be brief. Thank you very much for the kind words from the council and the members of the community that endorsed my short time here at mayor. I just want to remind everybody, like Hap, if you're still here, we need young people. I'm glad to see you're back, Hap, because Ms. Frankel is in the back and she can organize a ride. Barry Haldeman, you need to see people like Hap. I hope you guys get together and we get a good showing there tomorrow. I know I will bring my torch and my alternative pitchfork because they need to see that. It's not bad at Pat's Sheriff's Department scrutiny. Craig, thank you for your comments. They're always, you know, elaborate and well-funded in the time that you have spent and, you know, doing the research that you do. You're the kind of people that we need here at the city council. I appreciate that. Thank you very much. And Joel, don't give up. You know, you've mentioned this all the time whenever you speak. And we got your back and we're going to move through this. And we'll eventually get everything passed that's necessary and the city will truly be a leader on rodenticides, herbicides, and pesticides. So thank you for your patience. Continue the fight and we're behind you. Thank you very much. I appreciate it, Karen. Thank you.
Thank you, Jefferson. Mikey?
Thank you. Wow, it's a long night just to get here. I want to thank all the speakers very much. I really, really appreciate it. Thank you, your, your family. I know you've been through a lot. I just want to echo on what Caroline said, that what we notice trying to help people get their houses going, it takes communication. You really ought to communicate. You really gotta not wait around. You gotta find one of us and you gotta find Riva because it's complicated. And, and it just takes a, I just noticed a lot of people that are struggling don't, I'm not saying they're waiting around, but they're, they're lost and they don't know where to go next. Because it's overwhelming. It is. It's really difficult. Rebuilding is super, super hard. So please come to the city and let us try and help you as best we can. And don't be shy. I tell people, if you're driving by, just come by and talk to the desk, whatever it takes. Because I really want to see people get back in their homes. So thank you on that. Jefferson, wow. I remember when you were first running, I remember I was doing that forum at Paradise Cove and you came up. I think it was one of the very first forum when you were first time around. So that was quite a while ago. Congratulations. It's been quite a road. You've done amazing things.
Thank you. And we're both equally on gray hair now.
Trying to see who's is falling out quicker, but either way, you've done amazing things and thank you very much. It goes very much noticed. Karen, congratulations.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. And I, I think Karen and I have talked extensively about our roles as mayor and mayor pro tem. And we've pretty much come to the understanding that my role is to carry her purse when she's busy being mayor. And so just be aware of that if that makes sense. Lance and Craig, talking about climate, thank you very much. Passion about this subject. We have so much work to do. The city has a lot to get organized on what we're doing going forward. A lot's been done by previous councils, but clearly we're, we're talking about, we're talking about life-changing, world-changing stuff right now. So I appreciate your seriousness and I look forward to a lot of what we do and how we do it going forward. So I'm not going to get into that now. It's going to take too long. Hap and others on STRs, I hear you, that, that is coming back here. I believe it's going to come back this year finally. So it's been, it's, yes, thank you for bringing that up. Joel, thank you, as always. Joel, and I met recently and out of that came, that court case he referred to was discovered. And let's just say, we're hoping to push forward soon on that and, and what that means. So thank you very much, Joel. I appreciate your persistence and everything you've taught me, but the education of this. And yes, it's not just rodenticides, it's all the poisons in our environment. I hear you loud and clear there. And thank you very much for that. And I do hope, I do hope everyone who can will come to the Board of Supervisors tomorrow morning. This is important. I am driving there. I cannot drive back, so I can give a ride there. And I don't know what to do besides that. I have to go to work after that in town, unfortunately. So if anyone wants a ride, let me know. I'll be heading that way early in the morning. Besides that, actually, I have, I have a question. Do we have a ZERACIS meeting set up? Is there one coming?
Give me one second to look it up.
And I didn't mean to surprise you on that. I know there's a ZERACIS. Folks are here.
Yeah, I didn't see one, but we have an ERB meeting.
Yeah.
October 14th.
All right.
3 o'clock.
Great. I just want to thank, thank you for bringing forward because I know some important things are waiting and I know it's work and hard to schedule, but I just want to say thank you to you both on that. And lastly, to all of you that have come to some of the fire-related events here, I think I've been at five in the last two weeks at least, thank you for coming. It's been really, some of them have been really magical. You could feel my trauma and your trauma all sort of working its way out. So it's some really, really good stuff that's been put together by the city. And there's more coming. If you missed the fire-scaping session that we had on landscaping in a fire, high fire zone, there's going to be, it's going to come back again November 5th. It's going to be a little more fine-tuned, as I understand it, talking with the speaker. So if you haven't been to that one, I really recommend you put that in your calendar because your landscaping can absolutely save your house. And, and that's an important one. So other than that, we're, we're here working away, trying to make things happen. We've met with SCE on, you can imagine, issues related to safety and resilience. Been working with our lobbyists on things related to environmental and homelessness. And lastly, I thought the Radical Beauty Part Two Friday night, for those who made it, wow, just amazing. What a program. Our Cultural Arts Commission is so fantastic and Kristen and others at the city that put that together. You can see the art here, but the performances were amazing. The video of the kid on the piano, oh my gosh, I'm not, so is, is the video going to be posted soon?
Yes, it'll be up this week.
It'll be up this week. So try and check that out. They're, they're really, really good and a wonderful, wonderful evening. Thank you very much.
One more mention that Mikey and I attended the climate change meeting. There were two of them, one in front of Pepperdine and one at Bluffs Park. And it was significant. There were at least 50 kids there. Pictures were taken and speeches were made and it was a good attendance. And I wanted to just let you know that your council was there with the climate change
Okay, thank you. Thank you to all the public speakers this evening. Carradines, I'm very happy for you that you've got your permit. Yeah. Okay, well, almost at the very end of the finish line with that part of it. So let the building begin. Terry Lukoff, I think, has left, but I want to say for Terry and anybody else who's working through the process, please don't hesitate to contact the city. Our city manager has committed to meet with each and every person who's working on rebuilding. Contact her or contact me. We'll make sure that happens. And if explanation is needed, if clarification is needed, we want to help people get to that point. We want to see this city rebuilt and quickly. Joel, thank you for all the work you do. I know you and Kian have been working on this for years. Thank you for educating me as much as you have. And yeah, it's, man, it's a slow process, but we're not going to forget about it. We're not going to put it on a back burner. We're going to keep working forward on this. So thank you for reminding us tonight. Deborah Frankel and Barry Haldeman and anybody else who's going to the Board of Supervisors meeting tomorrow morning, I too am going. I will be speaking on behalf of the city. And I guess that'll be my first official duty as mayor and I look forward to it. Unfortunately, from what I know, we each only have two minutes. So I do recommend, if you have your words ready, please go ahead and read them with a timer and make sure that you get to say everything you wanted to without getting cut off at the mic tomorrow. Craig, yes, we will ask Edison about their notification process. In fact, Mikey and Riva and I met with Edison representatives this past week to talk about upcoming work with their infrastructure repair and, and just old equipment that's outdated now. And we're continuing that conversation. I'll mention that with them the next time we speak. Hap, thank you for coming. We need more young people here. So please keep coming back and bring a friend. Yeah, all these issues are important and I'm happy to have you come and speak. And yes, we do need to address housing here. I appreciate that. Greta Thunberg is my new idol, I have to say. She just delivers the message. She doesn't get riled up, but she speaks in a calm and deliberate voice. And I think both her message and her delivery are something we all need to pay more attention to. I want to thank the city. I want to thank Riva, Susan, Jerry Vandermeulen, Mikey, and everybody who has been putting the emergency preparedness events together. I have attended several of them. They've all been excellent. Most of them have been incredibly well-attended. I would say I was even surprised. I thought maybe people would be getting kind of meetinged out, but I'm not seeing that. So that's great. And there are more events coming. So please look on the city website or if you have the flyer that lists all of the preparedness events in September, please look at the remaining events. I had the pleasure of attending the Contract Cities Board of Directors Meeting in Marina Del Rey. It's the only meeting of the year that's held on the West Side. It did include a tour of one of the LA County Fire Department boats at Marina Del Rey. And as it, as it was held on September 12th, there was a color guard in honor of those lost on 9/11. I went to the monthly COG meeting as I am the COG representative. And I was confirmed as the representative to the LA County Division Board of the California League of Cities. So luckily, that doesn't involve driving. It's a monthly conference call. So that didn't seem like too much to ask. If anybody attended this most recent Library Speaker Series presentation, it was really excellent. Deconstructing Abbey Road, it really was amazing. Cultural and technical, really, I would say, one of the better ones that we've seen here. I'd like to thank the city and library staff for booking that and for all of the events that they book. Everybody, please be on the lookout. I will remind you again what we heard a few minutes ago. The next program in the Library Speaker Series is something new. This is called the Local Author Series. It will be Wednesday, this coming Wednesday, September 25th at 7:00 p.m. And this time, instead of here at City Hall, it's at the Public Library. The two speakers are Suzanne Goldeman and June Lauks, both experts in their respective fields. The events are free, but please make a reservation. You can do that on the city website, malibu city.org/libriesspeakerseries. Yes, Mikey and I met with SoCal Edison about their repair, replacement, upgrades, also about PSPS, which is Public Safety Power Shut-Off, the program that they are legally allowed to do. It does affect all of us. Last night, I went online to SoCal Edison and signed up for PSPS alerts directly from Edison. You can do that. It just takes a few minutes. So I encourage that along with all of the city alerts. And that's it for me. Next on the agenda, as we've moved up item 5A, do we have a staff report?
Good evening, councilmembers. Mayor Farrar, congratulations. Item 5A is brought to you at the council's direction back from April 23, 2018. So this predates Mayor Farrar and Mayor Pro Tem Pearson. The item is related to zoning code interpretation number eight, which is part of the larger interpretation manual created by staff. And frequently, items in this manual are reviewed by either ZERACIS, the Zoning Ordinance Revisions and Code Enforcement Subcommittee of the City Council, or directly with council. Prior to being put into this manual, it derives from a direction in the municipal code stating that any interpretations that are regularly used by staff should be reduced to writing so that everybody has access to them and they're not some secret interpretations, guidance... interpretations, um, guidance manual. So, um, back in the 90s, this policy related to, um, gating of private streets was developed. It was, uh, re-adopted in, um, not adopted formally, but, um, reinstituted in 2005. The concern, um, most recently by the city council relates to the requirement in the policy stating that, um, an HOA must be the applicant for a project involving the gating of a private street and that that was, um, inflexible, uh, for circumstances where a neighborhood might not have an HOA. Um, I wanna be clear that this item before you tonight is just related to this interpretation in general, it's not related to specifically the application, um, for the Villa Escondido neighborhood that is still pending. Um, the staff report that was included as an attachment to this, um, item tonight does reference that application, but that's not actually before you tonight. So the changes that we have made, um, for your feedback tonight, um, on attachment one are shown in underline format and it would allow, um, rather than, for a neighborhood that does not have a, a legally formed homeowners association, it would allow the property owner of the property where the gate is actually going to be located to be the applicant. And then the application would need to include, um, demonstration that 90% of the property owners whose primary access to public streets is through the proposed gate approve or are in favor of including a gate or putting in a gate in that location. Um, this approach allows for the, the city to be indemnified by the, the entity applying for the gate and also to ensure that the gate is properly maintained, including insurance, but more importantly, that the gate is being maintained and operated, um, appropriately. Um, we made some minor changes also, um, to indicate that the gate application shall, shall also comply with the Malibu Municipal Code and the Local Coastal Program. The Local Coastal Program, Program was not, um, it was in place, but was not acknowledged in the, uh, 2005 version of this, um, interpretation. So that's what's being proposed. Um, I would like to have any feedback from the council and, um, then we would, uh, finalize the interpretation and, and add it to the manual.
Thank you, Bonnie.
Are there public comments?
Yeah, we have several speakers. Uh, I will call you up, uh, in the order the slips have been submitted and please try to come to the front so we save time. First up is Oscar Victoria and you have an additional minute from Jessica Wen. Is Jessica here?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Four minutes total.
Good evening, council members, congratulations, Mayor Farrar. Um, I'm here on behalf of the Mountains Recreation and Conservation Authority, I am staff counsel for the MRCA and I'm he, uh, just to begin, I would like to, uh, state that we have submitted a letter that goes into much more detail than I'm about to go into about why we opposed, we opposed the proposed, uh, changes to the ordinance interpretation. Um, essentially, we at the MRCA would like the council and the city to follow the legal advice that set forth by its own, its outside council when they stated that the city should not permit a situation where some property owners consent to restrict access to their street while others with the same rights to the use of the street do not agree. Uh, it is, from this opinion, the outside council, Richard Watson and Gerson, suggested that 100% of property owners should agree to, um, to restrict access and that the applicant should be an HOA. Um, this opinion was also shared by the then city attorney, who also happens to be the current city attorney, who also stated, according to the staff report, that, uh, excuse me, that the, uh, that, that 100% of affected property owners must give written consent to construct an entry gate. So again, we, we urge the council and the city to follow the advice of its outside council and its city attorney when they suggest that 100% of property owners should be required in order to restrict access into the community. Um, and the, the proposed, uh, uh, update really fails to acknowledge the policy, um, the public policy importance of why an HOA and 100% should be required. Um, acceptance of the proposed update runs counter to principles of fairness and equal protection and it is, it is ripe for potential abuse against property owners who disagree with being restricted to, to their properties. Um, the, part of the reason you want an HOA to serve as the applicant is because they are bound by certain regulations such as the Davis Sterling Act and the nonprofit mutual benefit corporation law to ensure that safeguards are instituted to make sure that, that property owners' rights are protected. Some of these requirements are that, uh, board directors be elected by the members of the community, that open meetings be, be held, um, annually and that notice of these meetings go out to the community. Um, it also requires that the books and the records of the HOA be available for inspection upon request by any members of the community. None of these will be present if the city adopts this proposed ordinance where any, any property owner, so long as they have so-called 90% of the community's approval, can just, um, can put a gate in. Um, that's a perfect example, even though I know that this isn't specific to the Sycamore Park issue, um, I think part of the reason this came up is because of the issue that's going on within Sycamore Park and Villa Escondido Drive. Um, as the largest property owner within the community, the MRCA has repeatedly requested to join the, the organization that is requesting for the gate to be instituted with no response. Um, and so we have, the MRCA has no means to appeal, to state its opinion, to, to request records, there's not even a board of directors that we can contact to, to voice our opposition to what they're trying to do. So essentially, if the city accepts the proposed ordinance, it's essentially saying that none of this matters, that the people can do whatever they want, they can affect any individual property owners that they don't like however they want, so long as they indemnify the city and they maintain the gate. And we think that, that that position is untenable and it runs directly against the fiduciary duty of impartiality that the city council is supposed to represent. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Barry Haldeman, followed by Ken Kiersley, uh, with seven minutes, followed by Elizabeth Stevens with eight minutes, if you... Okay, thank you, Barry. Okay, so Ken Kiersley, if I could just see a show of hands that your, um, uh, people who've given you minutes are here, Cheryl Calvert, Kim Calvert, Barbara Kiersley. Ken, this one has your name on it.
The signature looked like it said Carrie.
Am I reading this wrong? Okay, I'm sorry, let me just go through the rest of them and then make sure. Uh, and Barry Haldeman. So, that means we've got three, four, five, six. Sorry. Okay, so we've got three, four, five, six, seven, sorry about that, Ken.
That's okay, something's fine. Thank you, good evening. Congratulations, Mikey and Karen, you're about to embark upon a route canal every day? But I wanna congratulate you and I wanna thank the rest of the council for their wonderful work that they've done. It's hard work, the pay is really good and, uh, but rewards are great. I wanna congratulate Christie, the first time I've seen you on your grandmotherhood. It is, I know you will be a good grandmother in the top 1%, like you were a good parent in the top 1%, like you are on the top 1% of city attorneys in the state of California. Congratulations, you're gonna find out what life is all about when you get grandchildren. Tonight, we're going to talk and try to convince you that what we have is a situation where we have a neighborhood, Sycamore Park, but it's not just Sycamore Park, it's every other ne- uh, neighborhood in Malibu. With social media, we have this literal deluge of people, hordes as they've been called sometimes, hordes. It's like this thing tomorrow at this, at the, uh, city, at the county. People want to camp on Escha. I heard something that was just outstanding, a great, great part of logic. Somebody said in this, in the county or somewhere, I read that they were going to, should camp in Escha to find out what Escha really was. I said, "That reminds me of Vietnam, of burning down the villages." And, uh, so that they could reform the villages. This is much the same way. We as a private neighborhood, not going to the beach, going facing north, are having people come in who are not really interested in our neighborhood. We have to have some control and every neighborhood in Malibu needs this control. But we said, "We're going to stop them and ask them where they're going." And the MRCA comes in and buys a piece of property for a million dollars, your money, my money, takes that property and goes out and hires some attorneys, lots of money, and then says, "We're gonna sue you." We had to sue them to stop them and then they countersued. And so here we are, facing fines without due process. There are nine of us facing now $18,375,000 of fines. My wife and I, and by the way, I wanna thank you for all the cards and letters, this is Barbara's first night out from the hospital, I mean, uh, since she's been in the hospital. It's gonna be a long, long time for recovery, but we are facing $35,759,000 worth of fines. Not, we don't have any due process on this, they're just fining us because they're fining us $15,000 a day for not doing something. Now this is what every neighborhood in Malibu is going to face and has faced. So what we're asking is simply to have a policy that'll enable us to build a gate to see who's coming in. This weekend, we had somebody come in, tear down a person's personal sign and then give us the middle digit on the way out, somebody outside. We've had four robberies in the last year. It's just, it's a shame that social media is bringing those people in. There's not a lot of them, it's just a few of them and we're bearing that, we're suffering that. So imagine this, imagine that neighborhoods in Malibu and the MRCA can buy and come in and spend your money, a million bucks to buy a piece of property and then say, "We're gonna invite the rest of the world in." And it is on social media in the world. Because we have had people come in who are from Australia, from Canada, from Germany, who said, "Oh, I read about this." And what the, what the great irony is, they have other ways to get into, into this waterfall, this canyon. There are multiple ways to get in, but they wanna come in through private streets, private property, privateeismus and impinge upon our privacy, our safety and our well-being. We're asking you to help us, we're asking you to help every, every neighborhood in Malibu because they're gonna face this very same problem. You know, I, and I, by the way, I wanna thank you for putting us first, I could do everything I did 30 years ago, but it has to be before 9:30. And, uh, I, uh, wanna thank you, I wanna thank you for your help, I wanna thank you for your service, all of you, and hopefully, you will be successful, I know you will be successful, and again, thank you and Riva, thank you for your work, appreciate it.
Thank you, Ken. Next up is Elizabeth Stevens, and if I could just see a show of hands of people who've given minutes. Leah Johnson. Lloyd Ahern. Craig Cullen. Andy, is it Kersonas? Thank you. And Brittany Stevens. Okay, thank you. And Liz, you've got eight minutes, thank you.
Okay, hopefully I won't take too much time, um, on this. First, thank you very much for, um, bringing this, uh, back, uh, you know, for review, for the policy change and again, congratulations, you know, Karen, uh, congratulations, Jefferson, I admired everything you did, all of you do a lot of hard work and it is greatly appreciated. And people may not agree with everything you do, but you know what, that goes with it and you put a lot of hard work and we know that the hours are there. So, um, but I'll get right to this so we can make it quick. Um, I wanna just, um, make some clarifications, the MRCA does not own the most property in our community. Um, they also are advertising us, uh, the MRCA is advertising us on their website, so when they say social media, it's actually on their website that they're advertising us and they don't have public access. This is a policy that will affect all of Malibu, um, it's not just, related just to our community, even though I think we were the driving force, unfortunately because of the MRCA, but, um, I do wanna say that, kinda going to what Rick said, the devil's in the details, you do have to read the fine print. Um, I am gonna have another speaker that will come up and address some of the fine print that we need to address and I, I won't take up too much time, he, he will point those out, but it is, what I gave you was MRCA's property and part of the language that is in the policy right now states that if you are, um, blocking public access, they have, that's the MRCA's property, that is state-owned property and they have a gate and you need a keypad to get into that gate. And if you notice that picture, the first picture shows the keypad, now that picture was taken, you can see it's shadowed, that picture was taken about 11 o'clock, um, you know, early. So those gates aren't open and so there is no access and what I also want you to know on the second page, you will see their pedestrian gate, it appears to be locked. So I'm just asking that if they can have a gate, a state agency can have a gate for their property to protect it for whatever reason, I believe that all of Malibu residents who live on private roads should be afforded the same protection, the same safeties and, and that we, we have one neighbor who actually gave me her minutes, she's been robbed twice. So, and the last time was just three months ago. So there's, we do have an issue here and especially since we are being advertised, we are off of PCH very close, so I would ask you to please to listen to the details and some of the changes, there are a few changes that we need to address that will affect everyone. And again, like I said, this is a Malibu issue, anybody that lives on a private road should be afforded this access and it should be equal. And as you can see, MRCA has a gate to their state-owned property. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Liz. Next up is Craig Gold and if I can just verify that the people who've given you minutes are here. Laura Voidat? Did I say that correct? Laura? Had to leave, okay. All right. Larry Morrison? Okay, thank you. Elizabeth Robinson? Thank you. Carol Cullen? Thank you. Neil Gray? Thank you. Okay, so, Craig, you've got three, four, five, six, seven minutes.
More than enough, Madam Mayor, thank you very much and thank you, members of the city council. And I'd also like to thank my neighbors for showing up and providing all these minutes. Remember, all these extra minutes are provided because people are out here to support us. Um, as part of my presentation, I hope that you have a handout, uh, that was given to you and it's a three-page handout and it might be helpful if you separated the last page. I am one of the newer members of Sycamore Park neighborhood and as such, I get, I was, been assigned the task of getting into the weeds with you guys, so please forgive me, I'm gonna try to make this a real light markup session, if you will, uh, and just attempt to point out, uh, a few things in order to try to prevent some litigation, uh, because I think that's really important for the city and it's important for the, for the communities that want gates as well. Um, and what I've done in... gates as well. And what I've done in this handout that you've got is, is the first two pages are the zoning code interpretation revisions as the planning department put them out, and that's in the black and white. And then everything in color is an overlay that I put on top of it, just to make sure that there's a real clear distinction between what is there. And this is a wonderful document, and you guys worked really hard on it, and we just want to try to come up with what we have done, some learning in terms of working with the different state and local authorities, and how their litigation minds think, and to try to help you to make this as airtight as possible. The first one is what I call number 1-1, and you'll see I've marked there twice where the, you're talking about a legally-formed HOA. And that's not really a problem for all communities, but it is a problem for several communities, including Sycamore Park, in that legally form suggests that perhaps there was a HOA in a deed, or an HOA that there was at one time, but maybe it has been suspended. Maybe it was sued out of existence. All sorts of reasons that you might not have a legally-formed HOA. So what you can see on the other page, that third page that I asked you to tear off, is like where I say, we say number one, please specify that legally form must be currently authorized at the time of the gate application. That just tightens that language up just a little bit. And again, I'm not going to take you through every detail of this, just the things that we think are important based upon our experience. Number two there, approval of the community for the gate is required, consisting of ninety percent of the property owners whose current primary access to public streets is through the proposed gate. Well, we think that that should be sole access, because there are questions about how one might access. Are you walking? Are you driving? Are you hiking? Okay? And you might have more than one access. So if you change that to sole access, that really addresses what the property owners need and what who really are the people who are going to object to any kind of gate change. The third one has to do, and again, that's on the second page of your zoning interpretations here, the third one has to do with the remedy of failing to buy insurance. And the remedy here is listed as the demolition of the gate. And we're not so sure that that really is an appropriate remedy. Perhaps adjust the bond such that it could pay for a year or two of insurance to ensure that the community has a gate. Again, it's just the demolition just seems a little harsh, but if that's the way it's going to be, that's the way it's going to be. Four, five, and six, all on number five. This has to do with our experiences. And specifically, number five there says, "The proposed entry gate booth shall not preclude access to public parks and public trails that are legally accessed through the proposed gate." You'll see there, I highlighted three different terms. Public parks? Well, what is a public park? Some people think they can just put a sign on a piece of land and make that a public park. They don't have to go through and delineate the metes and bounds of the park. They don't have to do and go through any of the process, get a conditional use permit. So I'd like to see, our neighborhood would like to see, some language that a public park must comply with all of Malibu's zoning requirements to be called a public park. Similarly, with public trails, okay? We'd like to make sure that any public trail that might prevent a gate in a private neighborhood where the owners own the land, that if there's a public trail, then it must be officially recognized by the City of Malibu, not some wish list trail as we've seen in the past. And finally, legally accessed. And what we would like to see there is just a recorded dedication for public access for public use or title of record, not just people saying they have access. That's a real important distinction here. We want this all to be legal. We want it to be tight. Again, thank you so much for hearing us this evening, my neighbors. Thank you for hearing us this evening, and thank you to the planning department for putting together a really great document. I hope that you will see fit to see this through. Thank you.
Thank you, Craig. Okay, we do have a few more speakers. Alan Armstrong, Kate Novotny, and Ryan Embry. If you could please come close to the front so you're ready. Thank you.
Hi, good evening, and I really appreciate all you do for us, and congratulations, Karen, and Mike, and Jefferson, thank you so much. You're a strong guy. You've done a lot. So thumbs up, buddy. And Rick, your fire guy, we really appreciate you guys. Last time I was here, appreciating the sheriffs, and I know the fire guys come even days after the fire, and they took my father to 911. They were right there. Thank you. Skylar, thanks. You did a lot during the fire. Thank you. I'm here tonight to just mention that I believe in private property rights. Private roads should be used by the deeded or easements that are associated with the homes that are on these private roads. And I come from a road association, and not everybody's an HOA, and especially the olden days, the old roads were road associations where you just kept the road going. So appreciate it, and hope you can, as you always do, help us out. Thank you.
Alan, Kate Novotny, and last up on 5A is Ryan Embry.
Good evening. I wanted to address the taller and closer. The update on the zoning code interpretation for number eight. The gate for the Sycamore Meadows homeowners complies with everything that's required, the setback from the main street, the setback from the PCH. It's on a private property. The private property owner would like the gate to be installed. It is offering access to anybody who is legally allowed to have access through it. It's not denying anybody access. And I wanted to touch on the HOA issue because as a Realtor here in Malibu for too many decades, that I'd like to mention, most of Malibu's HOAs are non-enforceable. So HOA in a name isn't just an HOA. I mean, we have gates at Cavalier. You don't have to pay an HOA fee. You don't have to even be a member of the HOA. We have gates at Ramirez Canyon. That's a non-mandatory HOA, I think. Maybe wrong. There's a gate at Sea Ranch Way, right in the middle of Point Doom. That's not an HOA. That's part of a bigger street arrangement and beach arrangement. So they certainly don't have a HOA to put that gate in. So we have gates where there are trails already in the back. We have Sarah Retreat has a gate, has two gates, has a public access trail in the back. You can walk in if you want to. Nobody stops you. So the Sycamore Meadows homeowners shouldn't be denied a gate because of the term HOA. They have plenty of people in their community that want the gate. They have complied with everything else, and the term is kind of meaningless if every other HOA in Malibu's non-binding. So I'd like to request that the interpretation is amended. Thank you.
Thank you. Ryan Embry?
Yeah, the gates go with roads, and so I think if you have a road association, it ought to be all right to have a gate. I'm trying to remember the neighborhood that the city council at the time really didn't want to have a gate, and came up with these hurdles that were, you know, obviously to not let anybody ever have a gate anymore. And I don't, I don't recall what it was, but I was there for it. I think Christie might have been there for it, too. And so we've gone this long without getting to a gate situation, but it certainly needs to be a gate at this neighborhood. And the other part, though, is if the state keeps pushing on an HOA and wants to be part of the HOA, they will be perpetually outvoted. There could be limitations on use within the organization, and the state would have to be responsible for the actions of every visitor they let in, whether they commit crimes, or park wrong, or whatever. So I don't think that this guy on the public dole here, the attorney for the Conservancy, should be asking for that. I think he's just trying to throw a wrench in the works. The requests that the speakers have made are very reasonable, and ninety percent, that's incredible, and they have ninety percent. I mean, this is Malibu. You want ninety percent on something? That seems kind of a, I mean, that was one of those onerous, never going to happen conditions that was put into the ordinance. So it's time to pull this one back. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. Okay. Counsel?
Okay, a few comments, if I could start. To the lawyer's question that he brought up, he said, "This wouldn't restrict a property owner from accessing their property," correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. "Thank you to all the Sycamore Park people for being efficient in your comments and not having everybody speak. You were concise, and you had three different speakers that covered three different things. I thought that was a model for civic, civil discord and efficient meetings so we could get out of here at a reasonable time." So thank you very much. Fifteen thousand dollars a day seems a little unneighborly, but... Ken, is it true that you actually encountered May Rain? Do you remember you telling a story about that? That's pretty cool. That's old school. So let me see if I understand this correctly. This, to Kate Novotny's question, this, as it's written, does cover non-HOA-type road maintenance organizations, correct?
It allows this alternative path for, for agents, for a neighborhood that doesn't have a homeowners' association.
Okay, so the answer to that was yes?
Yes.
Okay. And that's, I think, answers the big question for the Sycamore Park people. Now, let me talk about some of the proposed changes that Mr. Gold said. And I disagree with you, this is my comments on your suggested changes. Number one, I think, is probably fine. Number two, I don't agree with sole access. You know, it's like somebody mentioned Cavalier, they have two different accesses. It shouldn't have to be the sole access. That's not, I don't think there's any reason for that being the sole access. Like, there's only one way in and out. So I disagree with that. I agree with you on the demolition of the gate thing. I think that's kind of silly. And the bond thing, that's a good idea. I agree with you on the public park thing should have complied with the city requirements if it's in the City of Malibu, like a CUP. Number five, I don't agree with that, where you say it must be publicly recognized trails as shown on a Malibu trail map. There are so many maps, trails on that map that are not official public easements, okay? And I think the language should be something, and I'll defer to the city attorney on this, is an actual legal public easement, okay? Because there's a big difference. They've got trails all over Malibu that are not legal public easements, and there's plenty of public easements that have been shaken down through the years by either the Conservancy or the Coastal Commission, a lot of them predated cityhood. So there's lots of those. But there are, the people who wrote these maps took a lot of liberty with anything that resembled a trail. And some of them are, you know, trails that people use, but many of them were not publicly, or legally, legal easements for public access. Am I using the proper terminology there? Okay, thank you. Yeah, well, I'm working on it. You know, I want to make sure that it's not just any old trail, okay? Because you're going to get yourself into some serious problems if you just said "a trail" on the trail map, because I'm telling you, you can't believe how many trails there is on some of those maps. A recorded dedication for public access for public use or a title, blah, 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 the last one. Okay, that's kind of what I'm saying. Essentially, number six is kind of what I modified number five. Other than that, I agree with your suggested changes, and I think they're well thought out. And, but I would defer to the city attorney. I'd like to hear her comments on that once all the council members get done with their comments and she, what she says about that. Oh, the other thing is, ninety percent, I think that's a little stiff. You know, some of the reference documents in here say eighty percent. How did we come to ninety percent? That's a little high because, and, you know, because some of these places have, like, for example, in my neighborhood, there are some parcels that are owned, have been owned by people who live in, you know, Reno and stuff like that. And I would, I would encourage you to say something like, here's a suggestion, eighty percent of the residents who actually live in there, because there could be some people who are non-residents who say, you know, I mean, it's, this whole thing is going to affect the people who go in and out. And if, if I own a lot in someplace and I live in Florida, and maybe I own two or three lots, that's kind of silly, I think, to say, oh, the legal thing. I think it should be the resident. Does it say residents? Does it already say residents? I think that's, I think that's what should be. I think it'd be primary, but people who own a house in there as opposed to somebody who owns an empty lot. I think it should be eighty percent. That's my suggestion.
Okay.
Okay. And I'd like to hear what everybody else has to say.
Thank you, Rick. Who else?
Okay, I'll roll with it for a moment. Thank you, Karen. Rick, you made some great elaborations there. I think it's very clear and succinct. I would like to add a little more depth to item five. It says, "Please specify that trails must be recognized, public trails, as shown on the Malibu Trail Map." So for some history, for the homeowners that are up there, for four years, I spent a Brown Act position on the Malibu Trails Association with members of the public. And we had organized real meetings on the trails that were provided, and then we sent it to Coastal, and we should put in there my suggestion, adopted trails with connectivity. Here's why. Somebody may grant an easement or access to a trail that's off-site but acres away, and a trail is created through collaborative efforts from outside sources, not to name anybody, but you know where I'm headed. And so the adopted trail map was something that the Coastal Commission said, "You shall," and we did. So I think that word should be in there, Bonnie. Is that something you might want to consider, or maybe is that something that Christie should say, the adopted trail maps? And clarification, I'll let you get to it after I'm done.
Well, the adopted, the adopted maps that we, that are currently in place for the city are the LCP Public Act, no, let's see, it's called the Parkland and Access Map, I believe is what it's called. And the alignment shown there are not all existing trails. Some of them are aspirational planned trails. So I think that's the distinction Councilmember Mullen was trying to make between, even though that, that map is adopted, it's, the trails may not be actually existing trails.
Thank you. So you see the semantic twists that are available to all of us, the ninety percent and the ten percent that are mentioned as numbers for verification for participation. So I guess we'll look to legal counsel for that. But I think that there has to be a connectivity in there. And I can assure you that the MRCA will show us connectivity, and they should be able to prepare themselves for, you know, coming forward with that because they're claiming damages, and so they have to show connectivity. And I want to thank counsel from the MRCA for your informative pre-positioning statements and letting our city council and city attorney know what to prepare for in your legal challenge. Thank you, sir, because you just saved us some money, and I appreciate the clarity. But understand that we're probably going to pursue the adopted maps, and you be prepared to defend that. Thank you, and thank you, Karen.
Thank you, Jefferson. Mikey?
Wow. It's pretty amazing to have such an informed city council on this issue. As a prior resident of that neighborhood, thanks to the Calverts, had a seminal time in my life when I was a teenager. I understand how unique and precious this neighborhood is, and it really is. What a special, special place, one of the special neighborhoods in Malibu. So at this point, I think Councilman Mullen and freshly- So, at this point, I think Councilman Mullen and freshly-not-mayor Wagner have made great comments, and I wait, I also wait to hear... I do want to hear some comments from our city attorney when we get there as well. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mikey. You can call me senior counsel then.
Let me just jump in on that number five issue. The point of it is that when we allow a gate, that we are not, by allowing a gate, precluding legal access to, that is compelled otherwise. So, sorry for being so interarticulate, but I'm like three-quarters here. So, what we're all, that's all we're trying to do. Because you've heard me say this 100 times, right? We don't adjudicate private accesses. So we don't, we can't say whether or not an easement that's been given to one piece of property allows the public to come on or not. That's something for the courts to decide when there's a dispute among the property owners. But, so, all of that is intended to do, number five, is to maintain our, you know, not getting in the middle of it. So, having said that, I would suggest, because I do think that the people make good points when they raise terms that are used that we don't agree on what the definition is, that's, you know, fodder for lawsuits, so we don't want that. I would suggest maybe just changing it to simply say, "The proposed entry gate booth shall not preclude access that is legally required," period. And then, so even if we're talking about, you know, another property owner who's maybe a private property owner, they still can't be precluded from going in and out. And that's all we're trying to do, is that you, just because we're giving you a gate, we're not giving you license, or we're not participating in excluding anyone's rights that they might have.
Okay. Thank you, Christie. Skyler, any comments?
So, Christie, how did you feel on the language about the verbiage in regards to the HOA? That's not really an issue, right?
You mean, the legally formed? I, what I jotted down was, I would be fine as well with just saying unauthorized. So, an authorized HOA. You know, the issue there, again, is that we're just looking for, sometimes there are HOAs that can legitimately speak on behalf of all of the property owners in the neighborhood. Those are usually ones where they're compelled to be members of it, right? Because I know that in, there are places where there have been two HOAs, there were informal groups of different, you know, political perspectives in the same neighborhood. And so, we, HOA alone isn't enough, but an authorized HOA is fine. I mean, we don't need to go back to its legal...
You say authorized HOA or group, or just particularly...
Yeah, or, yeah, a road association is fine, too. Is that what you were thinking of?
Yeah.
Yeah, just, we can say an authorized HOA or road association is fine. We're just, for the city's point of view, the only thing that matters to us is that it's an entity that has capacity to speak for others. Otherwise, we want to hear from the others. That's why the 90%.
I think we're on the same page with that.
Isn't that covered in number three, though? On the way it's written?
Yes.
So, legal counsel for MRCA, you now know our actions.
I'd be fine with just going to 80% of the property owners.
About 80% of the residents?
I mean, I, of the resident property owners? I mean, I don't, I don't have a problem with that. My question for that is more to Christie of how that works. What if you're talking about a zone, and there's, you know, not everything's developed, or everything's burnt down, and you don't have any residents there?
I think it would be helpful...
I mean...
Part, part of the appeal of saying property owners, that's pretty straightforward to establish, as opposed to resident, whether you're talking about everybody in the household gets a vote, or...
Yeah, so let's just lower the threshold on that to 80%?
Well, before we go there, just on this property owner thing, remember that often these gates come with an agreement among property owners to fund it. And if there's going to be a guard there, that's another, something that's going to be funded. And so, it's usually the, going to fall to the property owner to make those financial So 100% is the best and easiest always, because that means that there's nobody who is, you know, right. 90% would be like a second choice. And every time you go down, you're just increasing, yeah, the possibility of controversy.
Well, then, if we go to 80%, I'd feel more comfortable if we just said property owners, because then the empty lot guys could, you know, if they're living in Reno, it wouldn't be a factor as much. You know what I mean?
Christie, are you okay?
90% of the property owners.
You're not as comfortable, but you're still comfortable?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Other counsel? Is there consensus? I'm just trying to work through these things so I can make a motion, and we're on the same page.
Thank you.
Then, the demolition of the gate thing and/or bond, where...
Okay, so...
That's like a little confusing to me.
Yeah. So here's, here's what that means. You have to have insurance on this thing for good reasons, right? Somebody's, could get hurt. So what, the way, what the city does is say, "All right, we'll put some money aside now that when you have the money and you're all excited and you want to build the thing, and it's a good time for that, so we'll put that money aside." And as long as you maintain the gate and, you know, every, and you've got insurance all is well. But if, for some reason, you know, there's some controversy in the homeowners association, or there's, you know, some tragedy in the area, and it just falls into disrepair, and nobody's taking care of it, and now it's uninsured, and we have, now it's a nuisance and a hazard, now the city has this money that we've set aside in this performance bond to come and remove the hazard. The problem with just using that money to buy two more years of insurance is then, at the end of the two years of that insurance, right, we have no money to take it down. So it's usually, the, the purpose of the, the bond is to avoid a nuisance. And we do that with all kinds of stuff.
Thank you for clarifying that. And then, the next issue that was raised on item, just in terms of, I think that we already clarified the best way to say that, and it must be a legal access. As... Yeah, everyone has the lawful...
The proposed entry gate booth shall not preclude, I'm sorry, shall not preclude access that is legally required.
I think that that's, that's it. So I would make a motion that outlines those things that were just referenced. Kelsey, do you need more clarification on that?
I think we're good.
Bonnie? I just wanted to clarify, we were saying, replacing legally-formed HOA with an authorized HOA or road association, wherever that language appears, and leaving number three intact?
Yeah, I think that, that'll cover everything, really.
Okay, good. That's what I thought.
Okay, Jefferson has another comment?
Thank you, Karen. Appreciate that. I was curious about the, the gate closures on the MRCA property. Has anybody kept track of that, when it is opened, when there is somebody from the MRCA allowing access to the general public at that gate? Because I can see, possibly after tomorrow's rulings, and the way outside agencies interpret the use of our properties here locally, that that becomes a campsite. So, you can see where we're headed with this, and I know the homeowners may have thought of that, but in the long term, that's why you have five council members here to look at things differently, with different approaches. That's why I mentioned the semantics and the adopted trail plans. So, I would suggest that you keep an eye on that gate and see what kind of participation that MRCA has adopted is for use, when their rangers show up or when they don't show up, because that is going to be a determiner in the future of the access through your gate. Just to make, make that clear for everybody.
A little comment on that. That, access to that property through a private road, and the activities on that property were negotiated between the MRCA and the property owners of that neighborhood. And it's a peaceful arrangement that has been working well. So, thank you for your cautionary tale, but I would say that everything is working out just fine, and we have no problems with the MRCA and what's going on there. They actually do have two legal campsites on their unincorporated lot that is not in Eschede back there, and they're authorized to use it. And they have strict guidelines on the kind of activities they can do back there, and they've been honoring those guidelines. So we, we are peacefully coexisting with them.
Have you ever been camping there?
Not me, no.
Okay.
I, thank you, Rick, for that clarification. I knew that. I'm just trying to remind people that with the application that we're going through here and giving some merit, that friendly relationship may change and be prepared.
Thank you for that.
If I may just add, I really wish that the MRCA would just drop this nonsense over this lot, which just takes so much time. You know? Let our residents be residents. Well, let the parks be parks where they're legal parks. Okay, yes, that was my motion. I don't know if I had a second, but...
Can you do a quick summary of the changes?
So, the motion from Councilmember Peak, which we still do need a second for, we're changing the language, as suggested by City Attorney Hogan, to the proposed entry booth shall not preclude access that is legally required. We're also changing HOA to authorized HOA or road association, and the required support for a gate will be 80% of the property owners.
Did anybody want to consider the words adopted trail plan?
Let's see, what about the, hang on a second. Number two...
Yeah, we took that out completely.
So it's all, it's all off?
Yeah, I think this sole access thing is not that important, as I said. And are we going to include the thing about the public park having a CUP? Okay, good, thank you. Keep it simple. I like that. I'd like to second Skyler's motion.
Okay. I think we can do a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And one last comment for the, for the, in general, on this. This is not something that's specifically grafted for the Sycamore Park. It applies to many neighborhoods throughout Malibu. And it's kind of, it's a growing problem. It's, we're, we're in a strange conundrum, because we have millions of visitors. We love visitors, we like them to come here. And we have some great places that they come, like Zuma Beach, Westford Beach, Surf Rider Beach, where they're properly supported with facilities, with public safety, with parking, and with trash pickup and all that sort of stuff. And then we have some sort of anomaly places where there are friction with local neighborhoods and not, things aren't as supported as well with public safety, et cetera. So it's, it's an ongoing problem that's probably going to get worse with time, and we may see more of this. And it's unfortunate, because we're welcoming and we like freedom of movement, et cetera, but we also have to be responsible to the, preserve the tranquility of our neighborhoods and our residents, who are very welcoming of people visiting, and they don't want to see, you know, people robbing their place and trashing their neighborhood and all that stuff. So, and thank you very much for coming down here. It's not easy. You don't have an easy job, and you have my sympathies. But I would echo what Skyler said in general. You know, in my opinion, the MRCA and the Conservancy should be the most popular entity in the city of Malibu, because everyone in Malibu supports your mission. And as we have come through peaceful coexistence with you and Ramirez Canyon, I would hope that you would take that attitude with everybody else and become the entity that everybody extols and loves. And I think that's entirely possible. Ball's in your court on that issue, and I think it's just a question of being kind of courteous and respectful of the people that you kind of end in contact with. And I would just ask you to take that back to your leadership and, and consider it, because everyone in Malibu likes public access, everyone likes preservation, we're all over it, we should all be working together, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. We've been here almost three hours. I think we should take a 10-minute recess and reconvene. Thank you.
The farmers market is, well, in our family, it's a tradition, we go down there all the time because there's nothing like it. I would, because of the public benefit of this, I would like to see if I can get consensus on waiving their fees to get this done.
The only thing that's on your agenda tonight is to initiate.
To bring back, to bring back.
Excuse me, the only thing that's on your agenda tonight is to initiate the zone tax amendment, but when, the staff can certainly work into the tax amendment, the fee issue, and then it'll go through the public hearing process, but let's.
Okay, so I'm looking for consensus to see about bringing it back with that, with that as an option.
I don't have an issue with that and I don't know what the fees are, but I would just, I don't have a problem with it and I don't think it needs to go to ZERACES provided it's narrow like Bonnie described it. I think it can go straight to the Planning Commission, so I would make a motion for it to go to the Planning Commission. You can have a element of it that discusses the fees. I don't know what the fees are.
The fee for a temporary use permit is pretty minimal. The separate item that needs to be addressed is the conditional use permit amendment because right now the conditional use permit doesn't deal with off-site parking at all. And then what, ideally, if, I'm not sure where they're at with, working with the county on a permanent layout for the farmers market once the college is completed, but getting that established under this conditional use permit amendment would be ideal just because then they wouldn't have to come back a second time. But as far as this zoning text amendment is concerned, we weren't planning on dealing with conditional use permit at all, just because it's not really relevant to the TUP, but we could always bring back another item related to CUP amendment fees, if you like.
Mikey, do you want an item related to CUP amendment fees?
I got a little lost in your explanation there, so. Did, were you saying to bring back the CUP now to put, to just put that to rest or were, is that what you were saying?
So there's, there's really, the item before you tonight is to deal with the use of, the temporary use of displaced parking through this zone text amendment. And then separately and concurrently, they will be applying for an amendment to their existing conditional use permit and that's got the heftier fees associated with it. And I was assuming that's what you were.
Yeah, that was what I was referring to. You're correct.
But none of that's on your agenda tonight, so let's initiate the zone text amendment.
Okay, so we're staying away from that.
And yeah, and have heard what you said and then staff will respond to that as, as things come back.
All right, so again, I'm making a motion to adopt this resolution and send this to the Planning Commission for.
Maybe don't know much about it. The, uh, not the college, but the LA County promised during a meeting that the farmer's market would stay as is. Nothing would be moved, tents wouldn't be moved, blah, blah, blah. Well, unfortunately, they, it had to for them to, to build. They took away, at least right now, I, I didn't count before I got here, I should have, but there's about maybe twenty-six, about twenty-six parking spaces, thirteen on one side and thirteen on the other. I think that's the number. When they did that, we decided to flip the market. Maybe we could help. Flipping it means giving up our parking, putting the tents where the parking lot was, in hopes that the city can help us with the old chili cook-off site and we would park there. Not thinking, hello Deb, red tape. And I understand this, but there's so many things you guys have to go through in order for us to achieve that. And so I'm here tonight, not asking, but pleading with you guys. You know, the, we've given the city of Malibu an amazing farmer's market. If you go around and look at all the other farmer's markets, they may be bigger, but the cities are bigger. The quality of our food and the quality of our vendors and every little thing that is there is amazing, I promise you that. You're used to it because you see it, it's yours, alright? And it is yours. Um, you know, we were acknowledged just recently in London, in the London Times newspaper. It said, I know you're not gonna believe this, I should have brought it. The ten top places to visit in the United States, and one was the Malibu Farmer's Market. It's in the financial section. So that's pretty cool, guys. It's a little boutique market, it's your market, it's our market. I really appreciate what staff is doing for us. But why I'm here tonight speaking to you, please hurry. If there's anything you can do to speed this up. You know, when we were here maybe two years ago, we showed you an aerial map of, of how the market looked, and it was twice its size. Because of the parking, I had all kinds of people yelling at me as if I took the parking away from them. Well, we'll be back when the parking's back. Even our neighbor, what is his name?
Soborov.
Soborov called me up, yelling at me. I'm like, what's the matter here? He says, well, you should be at city council, your people are parking in my parking lot. And he's probably listening to this now, but I'm here. Uh, we, we need you, we need you to help, help. Your staff came down this week, I showed them around, and there was parking. Maybe I shouldn't bring that up. We're hurting. We need you. I, I don't know how you're gonna do this, Riva. I don't know if that's, you're the brain, I mean, you gotta vote for it, and then you guys have to think as how to do it. I know that, alright? Please think how to do it. Alright, please. Thank you guys for your time.
Thank you, Deborah. Okay, um, would anyone on the council like to?
Yeah, I got a question.
Go.
Oh, go ahead, Skyler, I'm sorry. Uh, let's turn the Wayback Machine, Riva, if you don't mind, to, um, the agreement between the farmer's market and the county of Los Angeles. Cause I know there was a lot of talks about what the plan was gonna be and what, how it was gonna work during construction, et cetera, because there was a plan, right? And I don't think, we didn't own that property at that time, so this, this spillover parking was not a part of the plan. Can you brief us on how that, what that plan was, the original agreement, and how that's changed?
You're testing my memory, so I apologize if I don't get all the facts correctly, but, you know, it's been a, the project for the county, on the county facility, has been a bit of a moving target, and so I believe they had made some agreements with the farmer's market operator in terms of how the layout would be, but then when they issued the actual construction contract, there were some changes to, that needed to be made for staging of construction and how they were actually going to do it. So I believe that was where some of the changes to the layout of the farmer's market happened and the loss of some of the parking. And then the city was able to provide, then we purchased the Aoki site and then was able to offer, we were able to offer that as a option for parking, but there were obviously some hoops that need to go, they needed to go through to be able to use that legally.
And so, and another question is, um, I just wanna make sure we're not opening Pandora's Box here. I always look for that law of unintended consequences. It's like, do we have, you know, other entities going, oh yes, now we can do parking on temporary use permits? What's the, what's the downside of this?
The idea for, for drafting this amendment is to draft it very narrowly. The, the city zoning code only allows for one farmer's market within the city limits. So, we intended to draft it so that it would accommodate displaced farmer's market parking that was related to construction. So it would be hard for anybody else to slide in under that type of language.
Alright, perfect, thank you.
Based on that, I'll make a motion to approve this item.
I think we have some other comments?
Um, with the plan you've come up with, how long will it take to actually get parking happening?
Uh, well, one of the, the items that I would like staff direction on is whether you wanna go to ZERACES with us or just straight to Planning Commission, which would help speed it up. So we could, if we don't have, the next ZERACES meeting is October fourteenth, if we weren't going to do ZERACES, then we could get to Planning Commission in October and then council in November, and then concurrently be working with them on their CUP amendment and temporary use permits.
Alright, so that's a decision we have to make as far as ZERACES?
Right.
Um, I also, I wanna, I wanna propose to the council an idea to see if I can get consent. I mean, this is a, one of the few public gathering places in Malibu that we have. The farmer's market is, well, in our family, it's a tradition, we go down there all the time, because there's nothing like it. I would, because of the public benefit of this, I would like to see if I can get consensus on waiving their fees to get this done.
The only thing that's on your agenda tonight is to initiate-
To bring back, to bring back-
Excuse me, the only thing that's on your agenda tonight is to initiate the zone tax amendment, but when, the staff can certainly work into the tax amendment, the fee issue, and then it'll go through the public hearing process, but let's-
Okay, so I'm looking for consensus to see about bringing it back with that, with that as an option.
I don't have an issue with that, and I don't know what the fees are, but I would just, I don't have a problem with it, and I don't think it needs to go to ZERACES, provided it's narrow like Bonnie described it. I think it can go straight to the Planning Commission, so I would make a motion for it to go to the Planning Commission. You can have a element of it that discusses the fees, I don't know what the fees are.
The fee for a temporary use permit is pretty minimal. The separate item that needs to be addressed is the conditional use permit amendment, because right now the conditional use permit doesn't deal with off-site parking at all. And then, what, ideally, if, I'm not sure where they're at with, working with the county on a permanent layout for the farmer's market once the college is completed, but getting that established under this conditional use permit amendment would be ideal, just because then they wouldn't have to come back a second time. But as far as this zoning tax amendment is concerned, we weren't planning on dealing with conditional use permit at all, just because it's not really relevant to the, the TUP, but we could always bring back another item, uh, related to CUP amendment fees, if you like.
Mikey, do you want an item related to CUP amendment fees?
I, I got a little lost in your explanation there, so, did, were you saying to bring back the CUP now to, to put, to just put that to rest? Or were, is that what you were saying?
So there's, there's really, the item before you tonight is to deal with the use of, the temporary use of displaced parking-
Right.
-through this zone tax amendment, and then separately and concurrently, they will be applying for an amendment to their existing conditional use permit, and that's got the heftier fees associated with it, and I was assuming that's what you were-
Yeah, that was what I was referring to.
But none of that's on your agenda tonight, so let's initiate the-
Okay, so we're staying away from that.
And, yeah, and have heard what you said, and then staff will respond to that as, as things come back.
Alright, so again, I'm making a motion to adopt this resolution and send this to the Planning Commission for-
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Three D, three B seven-
Okay, three B seven, I have one speaker slip. Oh, excuse me, two. I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time reading this one.
Craig Hill.
Craig Hill? Yeah, I guess your handwriting gets more difficult to read as the evening goes on, followed by Paul Grisanti.
I wish I had a report.
Okay, Andrew and Christine have a staff report, thank you.
Yes, I can give a brief staff report to start, if you wish.
Sorry, Craig.
Mayor Fair, members of the council. What this is, is a professional services agreement with Environmental Science Associates for the Coastal Vulnerability Assessment Project. And with me tonight, I have staff who have been working to bring this before you, and I have Nick Garrity from Environmental Science Associates, which is the firm we're proposing to enter the agreement with. This item, this contract was requested by council, and we put out an RFP in June, and we interviewed two companies, the, the only two that applied for it. Staff worked to put together an environmental sustainability meeting, and our recommendation to hire Environmental Science Associates was brought before the Environmental Sustainability Subcommittee on September third. The Subcommittee concurred with staff's recommendation, so we came forward with this agreement. Just to give a big overview of what the project is, it is to assess Malibu's vulnerability to sea level rise, particularly coastal hazards associated with sea level rise, and what the project includes is developing maps that overlay the coastal hazards with city assets, so we can see where the hazards intersect with the assets, and then to develop community input on what adaptation strategies might be. This work would feed into a subsequent project for a local coastal program amendment for sea level rise policy. So this is sort of the precursor to policy rather than the policy formulation itself, although it is an opportunity to solicit public input. And the, the main reason we, the committee that interviewed the two consultants selected ESA was a more robust public engagement program. We recognize that this is an important issue for the city, and ultimately, you know, when it becomes policy in the LCP, will affect property owners and the community who uses public facilities, so we wanted to make sure we have a robust engagement program. And that's essentially, it, the total project cost is two hundred thirteen thousand one ninety-five, and the project duration is for twelve months. If you have questions for staff or for Nick from ESA after you hear public comment, we're happy to answer them.
Okay, thank you, Andrew. Alright, Craig, followed by Paul Grisanti.
Still a good evening. Glad to see the council is stepping up to make this happen, and let's make it better, send it back to staff for one more go-around. Some of the items listed as optional really aren't. There should be multiple public meetings at each stage, at different ends of towns, different times of day. After Woolsey, the city knows that having multiple redundant sessions is helpful. At least one ESAT member shall attend each public meeting that has an agenda item relevant to coastal vulnerability. That's more than they asked for. The proposal should have an adaptive management component to accommodate updates in climate modeling, so the deliverables should be designed with a recognition that the process will be periodically revisited, maybe every five years or so. The consultants should package the work product so it's readily accessible for a future consultant, so the process doesn't need to be reinvented each time. It's an ongoing thing, it's not a one-off. Indeed, Coastal Commission's own guidance on sea level is framed as dynamic. This assessment should be able to accommodate that. It should definitely be conferring with coastal staff, which was described in the report as only an option. That, that should happen. It should be designed to address effects that are accelerating. So if sea level rise might be eighteen inches by twenty fifty, it, it could be seven feet by twenty-one hundred. Make sure to get active participation from key stakeholders, Caltrans, Edison, Waterworks, Verizon, and others, with underground utilities that could be affected by saltwater intrusion or storm wash. The city's assessment must be able to integrate all of their data and vulnerability assessments, too. Of course ESA should be working closely with the Climate Council, you just said you'd organize with the COG, they should be integrated with that. Some of those things might make the study cost more, might be two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the end, but since it'll include vulnerability assessments of beaches with jurisdiction shared by the state and county, I'd like to know, how much money are they contributing to this effort? They play a role in this, they should be pitching in, there should be grants or something. So finally, always be asking, how can we be doing this in a way that will produce long-lasting behavioral change? Whether that's future ordinances or incentives, ask, are we developing the information in a way that it can make a difference? Because at the end of the day, it's, it's not, we don't wanna see a quarter of a million dollars worth of paper sitting on a shelf in the city manager's office. Thanks.
Thank you, Craig. Paul Grisanti.
Greetings, Mayor and City Council, and it is still a lovely evening, and I'm so pleased that it'll be over soon for you guys and get some rest. I'm here today as a representative of a new statewide organization that is, has representatives from every coastal county. It's gonna be called South Coast, Smart Coast, California. And the genesis for this is Coastal Commission has, and the whole thing we've been doing with the Wave Up Rush studies, they've peeled everybody off, area by area, and they trash you, and it's time for all of us coastal areas to start supporting each other when this is happening. So we have already hired a consultants, and we're gonna ask that South Coast Calif, Smart Coast, California should be integral to the meetings of the production of the report with the consultant and the city planners, and I'm sure because you have public outreach, we will have those people here. Managed retreat should not be implemented where it would take, in quotes, private property, and there should be specific policies to that effect. The consultant should review the pending Del Mar sea level rise plan and report to the Planning Department and the City Council on approaches that they are taking. We all need to be working together on this. And offshore artificial reefs coupled with beach nourishment should be considered as a possible mitigation measure to protect established neighborhoods. And that's pretty much it, and you'll be hearing more about us because there's an announcement coming.
Those would, of course, be offshore reefs that generate very good surf for recreation, correct?
I think, I think if they were to, if they were to accidentally create surf, that would be a wonderful, it would be a wonderful, just synergistic, wonderful thing that would happen, strictly by accident, of course, you understand, Skylar. So, thank you very much, and, how, what a great night.
Thank you, Paul. Okay, um, we have a recommended action and several requests and recommendations and suggestions. Does anybody want to comment on any of them?
I would like to, Mayor. Thank you. So, Nick, hi again. Once again, I'll go through a couple of the things, it relates to what Paul said and to what Craig said, about some of the options that may be coming forward to us that we should consider to help you with this. So as I mentioned at the last meeting, the Moffitt and Nichols reports that we've already paid for, which was, I believe, one of the engineering firms that were considered for this RFP, am I correct? Yep?
Yes.
Okay, so, save you some time and money, maybe we can get something back when you go to your partners at your firm. The Smart Coast, California, that's going to be a new entity, that's going to be a kind of a binder between coastal communities, because we have to fight FEMA, and we have to fight outside sources that are bigger than us. So this collaboration is something that will be valuable, I think you really should include them, and maybe one more turnout with public entities, so that we can have input. I know there's two in the contract, am I correct?
Yes, we have two public workshops and we have two city presentations.
So that may be enough, well, I guess we'll hear from council. I'd like to add that you make the report available to the Santa Monica Bay Restoration Commission? Because, oh, staff will take care of it, well, I didn't read that, so I'm just throwing the concern forward, and that should help Paul out with his, his entity as well. And I'll add one more time, as I have for the last twelve years, offshore reefs are something that we need to be looking at as an entity. Thank you very much, Karen.
Okay, thank you, Jefferson, Skylar, Rick, Mikey? Would anyone like to comment?
I would like to make a motion to authorize a city manager to execute this professional services agreement with ESA.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, yes. Never really finished talking, but that's alright. Uh, no, like, we got consensus there, it's alright.
Okay, moving on. We have got agenda item seven A, the final item, and that is an update on school district separation. Do we have a staff report?
Mayor, I'll give a, a brief introduction, and then I can certainly turn it over to the ad hoc committee or the city attorney for additional information. As you recall, the city council directed the city manager, myself, and the city attorney, Ms. Hogan, to work with negotiating with the school district on the separation item, and since that time, we have been in active negotiations. We've met probably over a dozen times in, with staff and with the ad hoc committee and with members of, directed by the board, the Santa Monica Board, and gone back and forth on a lot of things, worked on a lot of different financial calculations on what would we be best to keep both the Santa Monica students and the Malibu students whole after separation. And I thought it was important at this point to bring something forward to the council as a whole and the community, because we've basically reached somewhat of an impasse in those negotiations, and there is a pending date of October second for LACO, for the Los Angeles County Committee on Separation, that we are preparing to attend and provide an update to them, and so I thought it was important to bring that forward at this time and let the council know where we are.
Madam Mayor, can I just-
Please.
-throw in a couple extra thoughts, just, just to add some meat to those bones? The issue is this, that there is a, there's a parcel tax that funds the school district that the voters approved, and it has no end date, and so it is, from a government perspective, a little piece of gold because of that. And it is kinda in the way of the separation in the minds of the district. And the reason for that is because if we were to separate the district, instead of being the one district that the voters approved the parcel tax on, we'd be two new districts, neither of which have had an approved parcel tax. And so that revenue stream is important, and there may be ways to solve that problem. They may involve Sacramento, they may involve, uh, new kind of ballot measures between the two new entities that would be dependent, they both would have to pass to, in order for either of them to be valid, or some sort of creative solutions that we are still digging deep. And the other issue is, while everybody is in agreement that the end result of the separation into two districts should not result in any of the students having any reduction in services, and notwithstanding the fact that Malibu has kinda been on the raw end of services in terms of what the district has provided, put that aside for a second, there has been some disagreement about what that means to keep us, every, keep the districts kind of whole, so to speak. And while the city has been all along talking about some period of time during which a disproportionate amount of city revenue might go over to bridge the gap to Santa Monica, Santa Monica has kind of taken the position that it should just be eternal, and that seems like a really long time. And so those two points are not, they're not cast in stone and they're not insurmountable, but they do feel like an impasse at this moment, and the reason we're bringing this to you is, one, to let you know how we spent our summer vacation, and two, so that, you know, no one's surprised later, but two, and more importantly, we've been telling LACO all along that we're continuing to make progress. And while we still continue to harbor hope, and I think that's a message we should bring to LACO, we're not sure that we could honestly say at this point to LACO that, you know, we're making progress, or we see progress in the same way that we thought we had seen it. And so we're looking to you to give us some direction, especially to the mission of the ad hoc committee, whether you want us to close the door on continued negotiations, and, you know, that's a total policy decision, you can decide, just from a lawyer's point of view, why would you ever close the door until you have something that you want, and the door gets closed on you? But, having said that, also whether or not you want us to now, in earnest, develop a plan to pursue the LACO petition without the district's consent or agreement, and that would be, you know, sort of, moving to a possible Plan B without, you know, surrendering Plan A. So that's kinda where we are tonight.
I got a, a quick question that I wanna put out there as John Q. Public, because they might wanna know. So this, this little parcel tax impasse, it's great because it's already been voted on, and it's for all eternity as it stands right now. Couldn't there be some negotiated settlement where the houses that pay the tax that are gonna be in the new school district get to keep the money there, and the houses that are in Santa Monica, they get to keep their money there? Is that not a possibility to work something like that out?
Yeah, in the, in the abstract, maybe. The issue is, you know, this is the will of the voters, and the voters were of the district, and they were expecting that the money would go to the whole district. And so you're really, by, by changing it geographically and adding two entities, you're changing that, but with the help of, you know, Sacramento and maybe, you know, the courts, we could probably work something out if we could all agree on something. So, step one, get something we can agree on. Step two, figure out how to do it.
Okay, thanks.
Okay.
I just, I feel like at this point that we're, our dismal progress point of negotiation means that, I'm not, I mean, I guess we can always have the door open, but I think that we need to pursue LACO full steam ahead, and let them know that we're actually not making progress anymore, and that we have what seems to me like a party that says that they're willing to negotiate and that they wanna move it forward, and they're continuing to stall and make that not happen. That's what it seems like's been happening since I've been elected on the city council, and this has been going on for, what, seven years now? So, I think it's super lame. That's my two cents.
I, I'd agree with what he says, that's a fairly astute observation for somebody who hasn't been in the trenches for a while, but we're, and this thing has been going on for a long time, you know, Karen's been involved forever, and I'm Johnny-cum-lately, as are the two of you, but we've learned a lot, and I do, I will say this, for all the public who is listening, I think we have a great team of negotiators- I think we have a great team of negotiators and consultants. You know, Christine is great, Latonya is great, as are the two of you, and I think that we're all leaving no stone unturned. So I think you're right. I think, I agree with what you're saying. It's time to, while I was leaving the door open, should they be willing to be more receptive to a plan with us, we should definitely be looking to do things without them, whether it be go to Laco on our own or any number of other courses of action. So that's, as somebody who's been involved with it, I agree with what you just said, Skylar.
Thank you.
I asked some comments, too.
My question is, like, if you really just lay out our different options for where we stand right now, it is continue negotiation, which foreseeably is not going anywhere positive at this point, or at least positive for the long-term benefit of the community or students, or go to Laco. Those are really our two options. And then we would have some legal remedy that would just take way too much money and way too much time. Is that fair?
Yes, now that you've added C, yes, we're fair. But I think, I think the next logical step would be to pursue Laco in earnest, even without the district's endorsement.
And I just wanted to be, I don't think, the way that I said my comment, it's no disrespect to the people that are involved in that, it's just kind of from this sideline perspective of, oh, I've heard that before, I've heard that before. And it gets a little bit frustrating and I think it's frustrating to the parents and the people that are involved with it and spending so much time on it.
Let me say one more thing, which is that to those who feel like this is wasted time, it was like completely not wasted time, because what we've been doing in the course of the negotiation has been developing a database and a factual case that will ultimately help us. So we know a lot more, especially about the district's finance and about the proposed district's finances than we ever did before. So it hasn't been for naught, it's just hasn't yet borne the fruit we were hoping for.
Mayor, can I just jump in? I wanted to just add a little bit of information on that and that some of the things that we have accomplished actually are very useful and some, we have been able to agree on some very important points that we would need to have some sort of joint powers agreement with the two new districts that would cover both districts for future liability claims, which are certainly something that we would want to be concerned about. And I do believe both sides have been amenable to agreeing to that. We've discussed how to move forward for the sequin environmental impacts that the new districts would have to face and we've agreed on how that would look. We've agreed that the city, or not the city, but Malibu, the Malibu Unified School District would need some sort of administrative headquarters and staffing and they've been, we've both agreed that that's something that is necessary. So there's definitely been a lot of things that we have been able to chip away at and we've had, as someone said, very good consultants who have done an incredible deep dive on the financing and potential revenues and expenses going forward. So there have been a lot of very positive things that have been accomplished, even though we haven't accomplished the final goal yet.
I want to make one little comment here is, as frustrating as this is, this is a big challenge. You know, we do a lot of big challenges here in this town and some are very complicated. This is probably one of the king daddy ones of them, but I think it's well worth it. And we are making progress in our knowledge about this and our expertise of the subject matter and our knowledge of potential courses of action. And I'm actually confident, I shouldn't say confident, but confidently optimistic, maybe that's the proper expression, that ultimately we'll be able to come to a satisfactory solution that will be great for everyone involved. And it, but it's not going to be easy. It is not going to be easy. And I think that this whole, what the city attorney said is, hey, let's not beat our head against the wall too severely without looking at plenty of other places to maybe explore that might be more fruitful. And I agree.
Okay. Thank you, Rick. If I may, I'm the member of the council that's been living with this issue the longest. It's been 10 years for me and I will say 10 years this time around, working on separation. In order for my remarks to do justice to the subject, I feel that I must explain a little bit of the history of the school district reorganization effort. And for starters, we all must reiterate, Malibu is in an involuntary relationship with Santa Monica. Going back several years, the Malibu Unification Negotiations Committee, MNC, was originally charged to meet for three months and come up with a solution. Those were three handpicked negotiators, each from Santa Monica and Malibu, the most highly seasoned, highly knowledgeable people with legal and financial expertise in the district, certainly on the Santa Monica side, former members and current members of the Financial Oversight Committee and longstanding community members involved in the district. The committee didn't meet for three months, it met for 14 months. And it was looking at equity for students in Santa Monica and Malibu. And contrary to the popular narrative that Malibu students somehow have more, and I will say what Riva said about leaving both sides whole after separation, both sides are not whole right now, okay? There are programs and facilities in Santa Monica, despite the construction that's going on in Malibu right now, that do not exist in Malibu. I'll give you for the first example, five foreign languages being taught at Samo High compared to two at Malibu High School. We were contacted by a member of the public who had hoped to come and speak tonight but was unable to. Two nights a week, he drives his daughter to a math class at Santa Monica College. She's a student at Malibu High School. Why is she in that class? That's a class that's offered at Samo High and not at Malibu High. So I want to be really clear, we're dealing with current inequities with Malibu falling on the short end of the stick. So I have to go back to my comments from two weeks ago. And I said it's okay to take but not give if you're Santa Monica. And I'd like to clarify that right now. I had a conversation last week with our school district superintendent, Dr. Ben Droudi, who I like and respect very much. Dr. Droudi told me he was disheartened by my comments regarding the school district. I told him that I would clarify them. I will be the first person to acknowledge the complicated situation he accepted when he took this job years ago. And I deeply appreciate the changes he has made and I will outline them for the community in case they didn't know or have forgotten. We have the creation of separate facilities bond districts. So this last November, Malibu had Measure M on the ballot, Santa Monica had something called Measure SM. Measure M was a school bond for Malibu schools only, voted by Malibu voters only. That money cannot cross over to Santa Monica and it passed. The same thing happened in Santa Monica with their bond. We now have separate facilities district advisory committees. I served on that committee until I was elected, at which point I resigned. We now have an assistant superintendent, Isaac Burgess, who was here earlier this evening. He is working for the Malibu Pathway and he's located here in Malibu. Something that sounds so simple but we've never had before, an administrator for the Malibu schools actually located in Malibu. And we now have separate fundraising entities. They are the Santa Monica Education Foundation and Malibu LEED. These are all much appreciated improvements, but they don't resolve the core issue. They're serving to make things better in the meantime. The fact remains that these relatively recent changes do not replace the need to reorganize to two separate school districts. What Malibu wants and needs is exactly what Santa Monica has always had and takes for granted, an independent, locally controlled school district. I want to say explicitly, it has never been my intention to undermine support for our local public schools, quite the opposite. As far as our local organizations go, I very much encourage everyone in the Malibu community to support the newly formed Malibu LEED. The acronym stands for Leading Educational Advancement and Development, or the local PTAs, Malibu Elementary and Webster Elementary, all of which raise money for the programs in our local schools. Whether you have a child currently in the local public school system or not, please consider supporting the schools. Better schools make for a better community. I'm not talking about higher property values, although that's usually a byproduct of excellent public schools. I'm talking about a better community all around. So I want to say, I did not mean any disrespect or discount of the work of the Santa Monica Education Foundation or its executive director, Linda Greenberg-Gross. I commend her and her staff for the work that they do. I ask everyone here to please look at Malibu LEED as our newly formed local organization and support that organization. So, as one of the two council members on the school district separation ad hoc committee, I share the frustration of the Malibu community by the inability to reach an agreement to date. And I did have the highest hopes that Santa Monica would join enthusiastically with us in this collaborative effort. But I'll repeat what I've said before, we have not had a meeting of the minds. We met on September 6th and the meeting didn't go very far. We planned at that time, both teams, to have another meeting on September 13th. And we left there believing we'd meet one week later and that meeting was canceled. So I'm very sorry that that happened. It was not canceled by our side. So yes, now we need to give staff direction about what to do. I'd like to think that Santa Monica wants to continue these negotiations, but I'm not sure I've gotten that feeling to date. The parcel tax, everybody needs to remember, this is a parcel tax with no sunset clause. So Malibu will pay that parcel tax in perpetuity whether or not we separate. Well, I'll take that back. That's a parcel tax that, in my opinion, will need to be replaced by the Malibu voters when we have our own school district. It's not a new tax, it's replacing revenue that would be lost when we separate. But the flip side of that is, that parcel tax will be on us as long as we're in this district. And if for some reason we were to not separate, we're not getting away from that parcel tax, it never goes away. So, yeah, it is a huge thing we're trying to accomplish. And as I said earlier tonight, of the three priorities that this council has set with its budget and its work plan for this year, this is one of three items: public safety, Wolsey Fire Recovery, and school district separation. So that's our job, to work on this and see it through. So having said that, I'm going to take a break for a minute and ask if any other council members have any comments.
I would like to hear from Mikey, the other ad hoc committee member. Do you have anything? Oh, it's Rick. Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't know who it was.
Rick, do you have a feeling on which direction, I mean, this should go? Do you think it's wise for us to kind of keep the door open but then also pursue Laco?
Yeah, here's what I would say. And this is, what we're essentially doing right here is we're giving you an update. Okay, this is where we are. We've, we're still working on it with them, but I think what we should do is, this is my recommendation, is give, kind of like the city attorney said, just give the direction to the ad hoc committee and the negotiators, the two chief negotiators here, direction to explore...
Develop a plan to pursue...
Develop a plan to pursue Laco and consider any other courses of action that might be able to achieve the objective while still keeping the door open for the present negotiation process, should there be any reason to think that it can be more fruitful. How's that? Okay, good.
So then we get an update on that here at council in a few weeks?
Oh, yeah. You know, because we've been focusing on the negotiated settlement. So now we're going to be focusing on probably a different course of action. And once we get our act together on that, we'll give you an update.
That does. Thank you, Rick. Yes, and that Laco date is coming up very quickly. It's October 4th?
October 2nd.
2nd, excuse me.
19.
Sooner. Okay. So, Rick, is that your motion?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Excuse me. That concludes our meeting. We are adjourned at 10:18 PM.